Special meeting of the Board of Education, Parable the School District is called to order at in the Tarbuck Center Conference Room. We'll call please.
This is Bowley.
Here.
Mr. Lightick.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mrs. Trubisky.
Here.
Mr. Welsh.
Here.
Dr. Thompson, special meeting report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Board is asked to accept the resignation of individual noted from the position listed as recommended by local superintendent director of transportation. Your V personnel, the Board is asked to approve the employment of the employee listed for the new position indicated as recommended by the local superintendent and director of maintenance and operations. C personnel approval appointment twenty first century CCLC. The Board is asked to approve the employment of the individual listed for the two thousand twenty one twenty two position and rate of pay indicated as recommended by principals, grant program manager, assistant superintendent and local superintendent. Funds for this position will be paid out of federal grant funds as indicated and verified through the work law. The approval of appointment twenty one twenty two non athletic supplementals. The Board is asked to approve the individual listed for the two thousand twenty one twenty two non athletic supplementals committees noted as recommended by the local superintendent voting principal. Personnel approval appointment daily subs certified teaching. The Board is asked to approve the certified daily substitutes listed for the two thousand twenty one twenty two school year pending successful completion required on the paperwork certification training and background check as recommended by the local superintendent and assistant superintendent. After we have approval of out of state travel PSL conference, the Board is asked to approve the out of state travel to Minneapolis for Mark Soder and Allison Tritnelli. Attend the NYLC National Service Learning Conference where they will be presenting April twentieth through twenty first two thousand twenty two as recommended by the local superintendent voting principal. The cost of the district for both teachers attends approximately twenty nine dollars plus the cost of associate teacher to cover their classes on Wednesday, April twentieth. G approval of out of state travel baseball. The Board has asked to prove the out of state travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina for the PHS baseball team to attend training and a tournament at the Ripken Experience from March twenty seventh to April first two thousand twenty two as recommended by the local superintendent athletic director. H approval of out of state travel. The Board has asked to prove out of state travel to engine forge Tennessee for the PHS softball team to attend training and a tournament at the Ripken Experience from March twenty eighth to April first two thousand twenty two as recommended by the local superintendent athletic director. I approve out of state travel track. The Board has asked to prove the out of state travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina for the PHS track team to attend training and competitions at the Doug Shaw Stadium from April twenty ninth through April second two thousand twenty two as recommended by the local superintendent athletic director. This trip is optional and cost for the meets will come out of the track team. Student activity count. Other words, this is voluntary for just the students that wish to go. This concludes my superintendent's special meeting report. Any
Summer.
Second.
Any discussion?
A question on the out of state travel trips. I know it was a position the board in the past to breakdown of what was happening on each day. It looks like that track trip is rather open ended.
Yeah, the track team, it's actually considered non school sponsor that. It's a, you know, it's a little different than the other two teams. It's mandatory kind of travel where they're going to compete and contest with scrimmages during those times. Really in the, you know, as this says that the only thing that that comes out of students or actually school funds is the cost, the entry of the tournament, which is out of the three hundred fund, which is the fundraising. And there has been discussion of even not even having that come out of the accounts and allowing boosters to pick, you know, uses a booster's account to cover it, which would then totally disconnect it from the school altogether. So.
Has the rest of the team been notified? We know.
No, I'm not sure what the notification is. I might talk with Mr. Rockwell. Again, another piece that we want to make sure that we included is that disclaimer that, you know, this is not, this is not a required event and there will be no negative type of misfortune for a kid that would not go.
It's all strange that it's we're proving something that has been communicated to the team. Seems kind of strange that in the past it was hard being on having full agendas of what's happening. We're proving it.
I'm not sure in the past we even approved this track trip. Was that honest? I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't believe it was on the agenda in previous years.
I guess where I would have a question then, because if we're saying it's not school sponsored, it's optional, but yet we're approving it, but yet the team hasn't been notified, but yet the cost is coming out of to register is the cost coming out of, there's a, I'm looking, I just pulled up the attachment. So it's five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So that came out of fundraising that all the students did, but only some students are able to go.
Well, again, you know, there has been discussion whether, you know, the cost of that event would come out of out of the three hundred account or out of boosters. Which you can come out of either. I mean, once fundraising money is put into an account, it really typically is a discretion of, you know, the coach and all typically what.
So, I guess maybe there's more questions because if we're talking about out of state travel. So the baseball and softball are technically school sponsored.
They're absolutely school sponsored. These are events the team goes on and that's why you have the very specific agenda. You know, everything's coordinated, the travel's coordinated, the supervision's coordinated, everything's coordinated.
And the JV and, or the, I'm sorry, the baseball and softball, is the whole team invited? Is the JV varsity or just varsity?
For baseball, it's returning Letterman from last year for varsity and then anyone who is invited. Maybe those were some French JV players.
So we don't really know the criteria for the track one.
My understanding it's it's bond. It's there's no transportation. There's no basically monitoring.
Right, no, no, just do they know?
Register and go. And then no different than showing up at a practice in state, you know, or a voluntary practice during a snow day.
Well.
Okay, so.
We had that discussion about seven on sevens, I think, was a big contentious item about so many students going not school sponsored versus school sponsored. Do you guys remember, anybody remember those conversations? Yeah, so that's why I'm.
You know, I'm not sure we, we've never approved of the seven on seven travels in the summer. It's not.
No, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we did. Don't think we did. And there was no transportation provided.
It's not something the Board is required to approve. So if you would like to table this and knock it knock that out of.
I don't want to deny the kids the opportunity. The thing that for me is I just want to make sure the opportunity is available to the kids that would be invited. Like, I don't.
Well, this is not by, this is voluntary, my understanding.
Right, but do people know about it to volunteer for it? That's the only question I have. I just want to make sure it's an opportunity that all the kids.
I, you know, that's.
That would qualify, have information on.
Mr. Sello, do you have any idea on how kids are notified or not notified about the travel to or spring break for this?
Okay. I guess the question is, does it require our approval for them to go? Because it's not, really has nothing to do with school. I mean, it does, because they're for current uniforms, but we're not. Right.
It's just the entry fees.
And again, you know, fact that the entry fee is being planned here to come out of the three hundred fund, that would say that it's somewhat school sponsored just by that cost. Now, once you take that out and there's no expense coming from the school, you could say that it's not a school sponsor.
Can we table it to the next meeting to win more information?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, does that, does that impede them from going?
I don't, I'm, I have no knowledge of that.
Well, if they were going to do it outside, it's not a school event. It doesn't appear to go anywhere.
We just have to make a motion to approve the items without letter I, right? You'd have to redo the motion.
Or we just approve it and assume that that will all be worked out? I mean, that's the question I have.
Table, we can pull it off and vote separately and then you know.
What do you want to do? Anyone?
Table. Oh. You actually have a motion on the floor. So Nikki or anyone could amend the motion and say with it, or you could go to the motion on the floor. You made the motion.
Can we make the motion with stipulation that the team be notified? I mean, that's, or that we.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're saying because I can't imagine.
I can talk to several people that would, well, I've talked to several people that would potentially be interested in going that have no information.
It's in March. Yeah, I don't know when the team starts to meet and when they talk about these things, but.
It's two months away.
So we're still winter season. So I don't know when the spring sports, I know there's probably a lot more communication than the other two sports because it takes coordination and commitment.
Yeah, I don't want to do anything that stops the kids from going. I just would like the opportunity to be available to all kids who are interested in going. If it is a voluntary thing, that's open to all kids to go.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't answer that question.
Okay.
What do you guys, anybody have?
I would say with the stipulation that it's made clear to the rest of the track team by the end of the week. I think, I think that's it. I think it's equitable knowledge between everybody in the team that this this name is available for them to go. That was my, my issue with it. It's like.
Yeah, I could approve it with that.
So.
So it makes sense.
With the communication that goes out by the end of the week. Well, I mean, it's Tuesday, so that should be plenty of time.
You're approving it as a essentially a school spot to be back.
To who is the communication out to?
Could you are.
Well, I would assume the coach would be the one putting in information out of his network, comes from.
To like previous players or, you know.
Whoever he's inviting to this meet, like that information go out to those invited. To the parents of those.
You don't know who's on the team yet. Well, because you haven't really.
Well, neither does baseball or softball.
Right, that's why they hold open slots for the, you know, he said returning Letterman that they assume and that those slots change as.
Has communication already gone out to the parents with the other two sports?
I know there were meetings.
They had meetings?
There were some Zoom meetings that were held about trips and.
Were returning Letterman or whatever. Yeah.
I think that's the, is that part of the issue, just making sure parents are notified?
Yeah, I think so. I think people should have some information on it.
I think that would be important too.
It's something that gets sent out through final forms. That just makes it easy. So it just goes to a group of people that everyone sees.
Whoever's, yeah.
Anyone.
I mean, it's.
Anyone interested in track understands that there's, there's a voluntary out of state meet that they could participate in if they subdued. General announcement like that.
Whatever they put out, I mean.
Okay.
Are we amending it or leaving it?
Amending it with.
Mark mentioned tabling it and then we had a further discussion. So I'm not sure where.
I would keep my motion with the amendment.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
One more question.
I just have one other question about on that topic.
Go ahead.
Just on the substitutes that we're proving, just the asterisk, making sure Senate bill that mentioned there that to explain what that means so that everyone understands what that means.
Well, yes, there's a, there was a bill passed that allows us to drastically reduce the qual, the previous qualifications for substitutes and that sun sets at the end of the school year. So while these can be approved as subs this year, that will no longer be the case moving forward unless something else happens at the state level.
And in the, in the statement, it, it concludes at the end of this year anyways for the school year. So we're, we're sure anyway, it's not an article. Make sure that was clear. Any other discussion or questions on anything?
I see this name back again, make sure she's a college graduate and she will have graduated, she will earn her license by then.
Okay, awesome. And the asterisk will be gone.
Yes.
Get some light out. Are we, good to go? Rockwell, please.
Mr. Lightick.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mrs. Trubisky.
Yeah.
Mr. Welsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowley.
Yes. And you have an amendment. So why don't we jump over to the end of the amendment, Dr. Thompson?
Absolutely. Superintendent Special Meeting then a report under personnel approval of termination. The Board is asked to, to invoke the irrevocable resignation clause included in the last chance agreement of employee notice causing their employment to be terminated as recommended by the local superintendent director of maintenance. Under V personnel approval appointment, general casual daily subs certified teaching. The Board is asked to prove the certified general substitutes listed for the two thousand twenty one twenty two school year pending successful completion required on the paperwork certification training and background check as recommended by the local superintendent and assistant superintendent. This includes my superintendent's special meeting.
Is there a motion?
Second. Yep.
Okay, we'll call please.
This is Bowley.
Yes.
Mr. Lightick.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Trubisky.
Yes.
Mr. Welsh.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our work session items. We have quite a list here tonight of six items. And we're going to shuffle them around a little bit for the purpose of time because a few individuals here need to get over to our basketball championship C C game, I believe. So I think we're starting off with a nice presentation from our high school principal and I don't know the introductions if somebody else wants to take that part on.
All right, thank you. I do have two others looking tonight. Our assistant principal, Mr. Netzwicki and Mrs. Soder, who does a lot with our one on one career advising and overseeing kids exploring what their future may be. So our topic for tonight, I'll pull up our slide here. Sort of the theme that I think you've seen from elementary and middle school so far is innovative type of practices or education taking place on our campus. So today, I'd like to dive into a little bit of how we prepare students for, with the key word being their future. We know that our, the workforce, society, there's a lot of constant change and the future of our students is exciting, but it could also be overwhelming for them. So what do we do as adults to help the students and what opportunities have we created over the years? And so what is our future hold with future opportunities that we're, we are exploring? And before I dive into this, I, I'd like to note that I feel very fortunate to work with a wonderful team. We got awesome guys, counselors, assistant principal, Rita Soder, Robert Al, who you'll see some of the work he's done. And we've always felt a lot of support from Dr. Thompson, Dr. Malchesky, whenever we push the envelope on innovation. And when we've come to the board for, hey, can we get money to buy a house for a house flip? And those things have always been supported and I'd just like to say thank you for that. It makes our job exciting and ultimately helps our students out. So when you start talking about students and their future, we, we create two goals to help us drive what we're doing. As principal, I see one of my main responsibilities is look at the opportunities and experiences that we have. And are they what our students need to be ready for the next step in their future? So let's go one, let's continue to create and look for what the best opportunities and experiences are. Number.
Point. Oh, the great picture of our employees.
There we go. All right, so goal number two. So it's one thing to have all the opportunities that we're fortunate to have at Perry, but then it comes down to how do you provide that one on one guidance? So when we have five hundred fifty students and everybody's future is somewhat sort of personalized and visualized based on their strengths and interests, how do we provide that? And actually, several years ago, we crossed that crossroads and we were having conversations and we ended up creating the position that Mrs. Soder now serves in to spend a lot of time working one on ones, but also to do more holistic type of planning to help kids figure out what their future may hold and what their strengths are. So some current celebrations of different innovative programming or opportunities that we have, I think most of us that have been here a while understand what Perry service learning is. I believe this is around their sixteenth year. They continue to evolve and grow and are, and the services that are provided by our students to our community is truly remarkable. And the interesting part about Perry service learning, it is based on service learning, but getting kids out into the community, whether they're even just here on our own campus interacting with adults or out in the community interacting with adults, those interactions prepare you for your future quite a bit. Plus a lot of our kids take the opportunity, maybe they go serve in a hospital and explore a career at the same time. So there's a lot of benefits to this class and it's highly selected by, by our seniors. The next one, I think we're probably year five or six of running an internship class. So our kids actually with Mississauga go through a lot of the, and I think some of you participated in the interview process, building the resume, how to walk into the workplace as a seventeen eighteen year old and then fit in with the other adults and, and be a good employee. So we've had kids wide range of opportunities out there. Mississauga works hard to get kids connected with where they want to be. One of the best things about this class is that sometimes you figure out, I don't want to do that. So there's as much of that, I want to do that in my future or I can eliminate that. That's not quite for me. The Pirate Project, the house flip, rather innovative. And once again, thank you for this opportunity. We are in year three. We hope to have that sold by the end of this year. We've had different kids come through each year and work on this project. And it's something that I think we could all take, I have a lot of pride in. Shout out to Mr. Suzie who has managed this project along with Mr. Toby and they've done a phenomenal job. And then more of a traditional opportunity within our own school, College Credit Plus, which around eight years ago became an opportunity in Ohio. Previously, there was the P S E O program. Our, our district took it on. We created the partners with Lakeland and Kent State. And we actually have Lakeland campus classes on our campus. So kids could take their college credit plus courses right up there off the high school hallway. At the same time, we've been able to maintain our A P courses and our kids have scored really well in our math and sciences and, and really in all the areas. But there is a really high performance in our math and sciences at this time. And then our electives, we, one thing we take pride in is having a wide range of electives. We see the brief list there. That flows from fifth grade all the way through, through twelfth grade and the different tech based courses that, that they have opportunities to take. Whether that's continuation, that's more of a fine arts area, media pro, art classes, choir band. A wide range of courses that kids have an opportunity to take. And then Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Ms. Horton and Ms. LeBeau take a lot of pride in the Pirates acquiring vocational education. Our kids go out into the community just about every day, working at different sites and to talk to our students that, wow, there's always that excitement. They love to come back and tell the stories about their time out on campus, which is, it's special to, to talk with them and hear about their experience as well. So I believe they're probably in year three or four at this point. Auburn Career Center been around for decades. Our kids still have the opportunity to go there. Their wide range of offerings that they have. Auburn has shifted in the past couple of years. Kids now can't start as early as a sophomore year. Not that many start in sophomore year, but it is available for our students. And then something that's more recent is the industry recognized credentials. You can see some pictures of kids that have been involved in different programming. This year alone, we've had a handful of students receive the Microsoft certification right there with Mr. Sarvis. And we've also S T N A is another big part of some of the offerings that we've had. And here's our current list of offerings that we have or items that are coming soon. One wonderful piece here is that a lot of this has been supported through grant money. Dr. Malchesky's done a lot to help us obtain that money. And we've been kind of different events to try to build up our offerings for students. Probably one of our barriers here with an industry recognized credential is transportation. So there's built in transportation for Auburn Career Center for ever since I've been here, well before me, we've provided transportation to and from Auburn. One of the battles here is as we train different offerings with local schools in our, in our county, it can be difficult getting kids to some of the locations. So that's a barrier that we're still trying to overcome. So they have those through all the opportunities. Once again, I'm, my part's just about wrapped up. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Netzwicki and Mrs. Soder here. We could probably talk for hours on this and we know time is limited. He had a busy agenda. Feel free to contact us at any point. Love to dive in. You can come visit. A common experience Perry High School. My, I like this comparison here. Perry High School is that home base. That's where kids are going to come in freshman year. Now, kids are on campus close to a hundred percent of the time and they're building that foundation for what they need to then go out and explore more of that junior senior year. But we want kids to know and families to know that Perry is that home base. When you come back, you can put, you'd be involved in your extracurriculars, whether it's athletics or theater. You can come get, there's mental health services, there's financial guidance and leave contract that we have. And then the relationships that kids have built that freshman sophomore year. Or if you want to spend all four years on our campus, you never have to leave. Sixty eight percent of our kids even in P S L do their community service on our campus. So while the opportunities are there to go out and explore, if parents, students want to stay on campus, we have a wide range of opportunities. So at the end of the day, it comes down to that personalization, what's best for each kid, how can we set them up for their future and, and send them off? So when we start talking about the future, it's great to talk about being enrolled at a college after graduation or employed in a viable wage job or enlisted in the military or pursuing entrepreneurial adventures. However, if you don't graduate, it's hard to move on to step two. So step one really is we track kids closely to make sure that they're on track for graduation. And which is quite the undertaking. Because right now, I think the guidance from OD is about a fifty four page document on all the graduation requirements. So they've gone from, hey, just pass your five O G Ts fifteen, twenty years ago to now you have fifty four pages worth of options and requirements. So to give you like a three hour overview on that.
Settle in. We're going to go through all fifty four pages right now. Grab some drink. Okay, so we'll, I guess, and, and we joke, but that's, that's how complicated it is now. And what our goal is to do is take what the state has made somewhat complicated. But it has given the kids options. So it's a good complicated. It's given them options to graduate and to make it simple for them. So there, here's the three things the students have to do. They have to earn credits. For many of us, that was all we had to do. And they have to show competency and then show readiness. That's how the state breaks it down and that's what we track. So the next three slides kind of go through that. There's Perry High School and our twenty four credits above and beyond the state minimum. And it changes a little bit from year to year that, you know, they, the twenty three, twenty five is different than twenty six, but we, we keep it all current for our students and families. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is the show competency part. There's end of course exams for algebra one and English two. Six eighty four is the desired score. If, if the student receives six eighty four on those two tests, they are considered competent. If they can't, this is where a little complexity comes in, but options, if for whatever reason the student is not a good tester, they have three other things they can do. Demonstrate two of six approved career focused activities. And those are the list of the six. They need to get two of those or enlist in the military. Or earn college credit in math or English, and that would be most likely through CCP. So those are all of the options to show competency. Okay, look at that one. Okay, that's show readiness. And there are two of all of those seals a student must earn. One of them must be an Ohio seal. They both can't be locally turned. There is certain criteria for every one of those that eats up most of the fifty four pages that we're not going to talk about. Take a look at those. That's, every single student needs to earn two of those. Okay. So all of that being said, the most, I guess, the cleanest, most efficient way for a student graduates do well in their course, and of course exams. Because that takes care of seals and competency and then pass other classes. And this is one of our monitoring systems. So there's three pages here because it wouldn't all fit on one. With all of that to monitor, this is for every single student at Perry. They have this much data on them and we go through it regularly. So on this particular page, you know, you'll see their testing plan, certain comments, omitted names there. And they have competency. Are they yes or no? Have they reached the test scores? If not, what's the plan? And then guidance notes as guidance counselors build that. Then you get into the seals. What are the two seals that they're going to earn? Where are they in the process of earning those seals? Is there a plan? Is it yellow or is it green? Or is it still red where there's quite a bit of work to be done? Okay, next slide is monitoring the end of course exams. So there's the E L A two, algebra one. You'll see geometry does not have any colors with it. We are still required to take the geometry test, though it has nothing to do with graduating high school in Ohio. But kids still take the test and we track those scores. So and then the next slide. So and then the next slide is also more testing that kids do, we, we keep track of all of those. And where they are in terms of getting their necessary graduation requirements. Okay, so that's just one, that's Rob Renau who created that sheet. Um, I've shared it with uh, some family members at other districts and they're pretty much amazed. Um, about how thorough it is. He inputs that from infinite campus, a lot of it's by hand, counselors have a play in that. And um, this is how we monitor, most of it is off of that sheet. Now, graduation requirement monitoring, we meet every single class, uh, meets in February to make their own personalized graduation plan. And that's a state requirement. And I'd like to say that's a living document, but the kids, you know how they are, once they, once they fill it out, here's my plan. If you looked at the actual date when it was opened again, um, by that child, it's the same day they created it, because they were just freshmen. Graduation feels like it's, you know, ten years away. Um, but it's there and it becomes much more living as the, as the kids get older and closer to graduation. Infinite Campus Automated Graduation Plan, Rob and I, Rob and Noten are working hard to have a, an automated loaded graduation plan in infinite campus. To act as a uh, a cross check to what Rob does on his sheet. And another useful way to make sure uh, absolutely nobody um, gets missed. Um, individual student meetings, that's our guidance department, they're outstanding with that to talk about seals and plans. Um, and and Mrs. Soder is also very involved in that too, um, what's the plan for those seals? A one-on-one parent student advising guidance, that's during registration season, that's right around the corner for us. Uh, that starts um. Pretty much with kids this week, so it's, it's in process right now. Weekly guidance meetings, um, every single Monday, we meet Porcello, myself, uh, Mr. Giannetti Holderman, uh, Coach Geswitch. If it's a um, S E L situation, we need to talk about some kids and their plan he'll get involved with. And of course, Mrs. Soder. Three times a year to planning the test sessions we have, one in each semester, and then one in the summer, Rob and I. Um, and with the help of guidance counselors too, sometimes go through that initial sheet I showed you for every single kid. To make sure their testing plan is intact, when they're retaking, how many times they've retake, uh, retaken an exam. Ever, and the whole point of this, I guess, is to, to show. How personalized that is for every kid, it's a complicated system. Um, a lot of educators struggle to study it, it's difficult for our parents to, to understand sometimes, it's a, it's not easy to understand. Um, but we're here for, for those one-on-one meetings. And if any kid is anywhere close to not meeting those requirements. Every parent, the parent will know, the kid knows in plenty of time, it starts as early as their sophomore year. Okay? Any? We're moving out, I don't want to take a lot of questions.
It's uh, the, the, it's awesome that our kids have the number of opportunities that they have, it could be overwhelming for families. I think the main message is if your kid is at risk of not graduating by the sophomore year, we'll be contacting you. But if at any point a parent wants an update on where their kid's at, reach out to a guidance counselor, myself, Mr. Netzweke. It would be happy to provide that information. Um, we don't want it, we don't want to overwhelm families with all the information and make it seem uh, undoable. We, we want them, they have the confidence that we're there, we're monitoring it, and we'll, we'll help do everything possible to get your kids to the finish line. So with that being said, that's the graduation piece, and so it's one thing, we want a hundred percent of our kids to graduate. But then we also want a hundred percent of our kids to lead with a plan, uh, accomplishing one of the four Es. Enrolled, uh, employed, enlisted, or seeking entrepreneurial activities. Which brings us to Mrs. Soder, who has done an awesome job in her short time at her position. Of providing that one-on-one advising and really building it uh, a structure and systems for our kids to get what they need to help them. Understand what their future may, may hold.
Okay, so um, we kind of set our system up based on these three questions. Um, we believe that a student, if a student understands a little bit about themselves, if they understand what they do well. Then they can hopefully answer the question, what does the world mean to me? So we've got some great tools, we've got some great people wrapped around, um, helping students kind of dive into these questions for themselves. And they like it, the students enjoy it, like, uh, it's, it's fun to um, kind of learn about. Um, not just a bunch of interest, we have some new resources this year that enable us, enable students to learn about their attitudes as well, which has been. Um, which has been exciting to watch, so, next slide. Um, so this idea of self-discovery, we're using a tool, um, one of the many tools we're using is called Use Science. And Use Science is um, a collection of brain games, and I can send anyone a link if you wanted to send it to you, and you can do it yourself, and then we can sit down. Um, they're super fun. Um, so the um, the Use Science is housed within SCORE. So if you have any um, connection to a student at the high school who's a junior or a senior, you're familiar with SCORE. SCORE is where we are um, housing, uh, the guidance counselors live in SCORE in terms of sending transcripts and college planning. And um, getting, getting students uh, connected with the right uh, start for their post-secondary education. But um, Use Science is housed in there as well, there's a sn- uh, version for our middle school students called Snapshot. Um, we have, thank you to, thanks to um, Mr. Sabar and Mr. Bezzik about um. I think at this point, like a hundred percent of our English uh, one students have completed their Use Science assessments. Um, there's a group, we're still reviewing them individually with students, so we read them as a group, they kind of see what their results look like. And then I work with them, um, this class has been really helpful, um, in working with them and sitting down and kind of better understanding. Um, I love it when a student is like willing to let you put their results up on the screen. And their friends in the room are like, oh my gosh, today at lunch, you did, and it was totally what that tells us right now. Yeah, so they, they get excited, they see connections. Um, they, you know, uh, they might have a similar kind of category as somebody else, but it kind of manifests itself in a completely unique way. So it just lends itself to that personalization piece. Um, we have that one-on-one time built into those English courses, we have one-on-one time built into government as well. So um, yesterday I was in the second semester government classes, and now all of our juniors have logged into SCORE. And they've started their new science ranking, so I'll go back um, in about a week and revisit those juniors. Um, even our, our eighth graders who went into Snapshot, they're using that information to kind of help form. Uh, choices they make about electives next year. Our uh, freshmen are using that uh, information and and looking at themselves and thinking, you know, I did really well in a class that. I get to work independently, or I can work in a group, or um, I work at a faster pace, or I may need a little bit more time. So those kinds of um, that level of self-discovery is helping inform their choices. Um, and also, the next, I'm gonna switch it to the next slide. Hello, yeah, thank you, oh, you got it, okay. Um, the next, um, the next phase is. Indedually, I can tell you that as a student learns more about themselves, their exploration becomes much more rich. So if I know a little bit about who I am, I can make better choices about what I explore. Um, whether that's the electives I take, the advanced placement classes I pursue, the C C P opportunities, what I might study at Auburn. Um, and then our growing list of, of credentials within classes that we teach. Uh, Mr. Porcella touched on this before, one of the cool things I think that we've been able to do is embed. Those credentials within the classes we already offer. So, you know. You can take up a class like uh, Positive View with Mrs. Bezzik and walk away with a credential built right in. Like you don't even, you don't even know it's happening, but you leave with this, with this uh, service aid credential. Um, and I have kids who say all the time, the ways that they use it. Um, you can walk away from some of the technology classes that Mr. Service teaches. With uh, like was mentioned previously, the Microsoft Office, um, the Acer Chromebook Text Word. Uh, certification, which allows you to fix the Chromebooks, which makes you really confident. Um, when they, when they break, so uh, so there's the, there's credentials related to, we have some um. Students right now being certified as ground uh, drone pilots. Uh, we have students who are working on unity programming and game design. We have um, already had students earn their, like was mentioned previously, their state tested nursing assistance credential as well. And all of these are Ohio Department of Education industry recognized credentials. Um, and then ultimately, you know, when a student can walk into a class like service learning or an internship. And say to that teacher at that intake, that moment of intake, here's what I know about myself, I really think I want to check out, what can we do? And then we can create such a more rich experience for that young person. Um, so ultimately, we um, hope that they use this knowledge from these personalized sessions, this one-on-one time, as they move, move beyond. Um, we want to make sure they understand that the old thinking of I'm either gonna go to college only, or I'm gonna go get a job only, or I'm gonna go. To the, enlist in the military only, that that's kind of like an old way of thinking, we want them to see how roads intersect. We want them to see how, um, you can get trained, you can get a college degree at some of the local manufacturing facilities while you're working. Um, we want them to grow their network. Uh, we, we had an alumni, she was from nineteen eight, come in to do our mock interview day. She's an interior designer in Ohio City, and she handed her business card to two of our interns this past semester during mock interview day. These young men are still talking about that, so um, they, they are so excited about their networks growing and the professionals. That their um, connections that they're, that they're creating. And then all of these students, so whether you're in P S L, looking for, or an intern, you walk away with that resume, ready to go. Um, interview skills, a cover letter, um, some of our students even have LinkedIn accounts before they walk out the door, which is kind of cool. Does anyone have questions for us?
Sounds awesome.
So one other thing that Rita keeps us, as she meets with each student one-on-one, she has her own database of names. Which is very helpful for us when we hear, hey, we have this opportunity, we could turn that spreadsheet.
I go in there and search, you know, like we have a potential S T N A opportunity this spring, and I'm calling everybody who's ever mentioned the word healthy nurse.
I know this is a ton of work, so thank you for giving the kids all these opportunities, it's outside the box, and it is probably more work than the standard. College military year, so worth it, yeah.
Yeah, so a little kudos to, to Dr. Malchesky and Dr. Thompson for the green light to pursue these type of, of grants and working hard to make it possible. Uh, a lot of these opportunities are first explored or piloted through, through the different grant money. And when you look at the amount of money that's flowed into our district, it is rather impressive, so.
The last four that are highlighted in yellow, uh, we're seeing, we're seeing a lot more workforce development type competitive grants come out, and so. Here at Wake, that's what we're seeing a lot more often than what we used to see in terms of. As many for literacy kind of things, it's kind of tilted. Uh, but that's great, but.
We attended a conference, I think in October, November down in Columbus, and there, there's a lot of money coming from the state. Pumping into workforce development because of the labor shortage going on right now. So we've been able to um, utilize some of that money to build opportunities. And last but not least, last slide we have for the night. Our next steps is, I think it's one thing to be proud of and and look at the opportunities that we have, provide the one-on-one guidance. But at the end of the day, we need to keep exploring, these are some of the things that, that we've done. Uh, we did visit Mayfield High School, they have a personalized learning hub, we plan on going to Hawken and looking at their uh, school mastery. Um, and then probably the biggest thing we have going on right now is trying to turn our K twelve campus into an apprenticeship site. Where we would be able to run a pre-apprenticeship and transportation and food service, custodial or maintenance type of work. And you look at what takes place on our K twelve campus, there's a lot of opportunities for kids to do a pre-apprenticeship, build the workforce skills, potentially learn more about that. So there's a, a two-part advantage to that, not only are kids um, building up and meeting a graduation requirement back to that competency part. On that pre-apprenticeship piece, but also with the, with the projected labor shortage that we may face in our own campus. We may be training some of our future workers in those areas, so it's a win-win for, for everyone around. Um, recently, Dr. Thompson got us involved in a pile for algebra and geometry with virtual reality, which is gonna be pretty amazing. And uh, just the ongoing conversations of how do we improve our systems and our structures to meet the needs of our kids. So fortunate to work in a great place like Perry where we pursue those world-class standards. And uh, blessed to have the support from, from the key people that we need support from, so thank you.
Thank you guys, we are, I'm proud, proud to be here and I'm proud of the work you guys do, so thank you very much, it was a great presentation, and please tell Mr. Netzweke.
Managing the students?
It's fantastic, and our students have just incredible amount of opportunity, so thank you guys so much.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate you guys coming in, and I think back to. How long ago was it that you came in and talked about the pathways? And that pathway presentation, and, and go back and look at that and see where we've gone from those days. And it's just, it's amazing to look at the evolution of growth, all directed right at what kids need. And um, it's just, it's, it's uh, it's what we're here for, and it's nice to be reminded of that, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our uh, item is, I believe, Mr. Rockwell and Mr. Christinger, Coach Christinger, Coach Rockwell. Call you guys, I think we're hearing a presentation from you.
All right. Thank you for your time, I'm gonna have Mike just jump in anytime, these are, obviously a resident expert. Um, has been with us now six or seven years, and actually it's just, it's in a little presentation here, but he was actually named Regional Strength Coach. Uh, Northeast Ohio, so that award is coming out soon, but that just happened a little bit last week.
Congratulations, congrats.
But he does an excellent job with our, our students first and foremost, um, and, and all of our student athletes as well, so uh, kudos to him. And we just wanted to come today and, and talk about, uh, we've had some discussions over the last twelve to sixteen months in regards to. Our current situation in the weight room, and so we wanted to come today with some options. And uh, just more as an informational um. Way to get you guys, I guess, out of the same page with us in terms of what's out there, what we can do. So we've got like three different options for you, and uh, we'll go from there, so. Just the, just the button?
Yeah. Still hot. Work for me.
Okay, so we, this was the first one, it's just a little video for you, just to give you an idea of some. Uh, what we're, what we have in the Olympic and free weight side of the weight room, go ahead, Al. So it is divided up into essentially two rooms up there, you can see on the other side, the other half. Uh, is our sidebacks area and our treadmills. This is the area that we're looking to uh, potentially upgrade and, and improve. So each space is um, about twenty, five hundred square feet. Um, and the one side, the sideback side, and the treadmill side, you can hit the next slide. Is, was done seven or eight years ago, uh, you'll see that there in one of the last bullets, you know. A majority improvements were made with the sidebacks and the treadmills at that point in time. So just some highlights, um, we utilize it as a classroom space during the day, Mr. Christinger. Uh, for his P and strength and conditioning classes, and I mentioned this, the coach of the year. So we have two hundred and forty high school and middle school students, Mr. Frazier will bring his uh, students over uh, as well. So just, that's how many students it impacts um, alone during the school day, seven fifty to, to two thirty. Additionally, after school and in the evening, uh, three hundred plus student athletes use facility servicing all of our twenty sports that we offer here at Perry. Um, so all in all, it's a space that impacts a very high percentage of all Perry students. Um, we have piecemeal improvements to the free weight, the Olympic side of things over the last decade. Um, but at this point in time, uh, you'll see some, the next slide, you go to the next slide. Um, just some, some of the newer weight rooms in Northeast Ohio and uh, what those schools have uh, have done. Mike, I don't know if you want to talk about any of these right now, but.
Yeah, it's a lot of the, a lot of schools have been upgrading their spaces, um, just to make sure they have the right training equipment. There's a lot of upgrades in the racks, uh, storage for the racks, just make everything a lot more efficient for the athletes. A lot of stuff we have right now is uh, it's just a standard rack, so it's kind of limited what you can do, you have a lot of options with the rack. Uh, but they have space-saving options where you have a lap, one on machine built into the rack now, so you don't have to have two separate machines. Uh, taking up a whole different area, so we have a, a space that you're looking at with the amount of kids that we get through there. We want to try to do as efficient as possible with the, what we have to use and how we use it.
There's brush, that seems to be working out. Pocket, this opened up this year. Well, schedule, that was a privately funded project, but obviously we've got some turf down the center, okay, bells and whistles. And we don't have Mentor in here yet, Mentor is uh, is something, we're talking with their strength people, their uh. Their athletic director, their coaches, in regards to some of their upgrades, and they're actually opening up a new room with the next six, eight months, something like that. Um, so here's option number one, and Mike can jump in anytime, so we can renovate and upgrade the current space. Um, which would include. Which would include tearing down the existing wall. We would remove approximately half of the side backs or the cardio equipment. And turn it into a two thirds instead of half and half, two thirds free weight Olympic area and essentially one third side backs and cardio area. So Mike, do you wanna walk me through what all this?
So we have all our racks, all our racks would be over here on this side. There's double sided racks in the middle. Dumbbell rack is separating the racks from the side back's equipment. The wall is currently kind of right in this area. It separates the room, it causes a lot of supervision issues. We have a lot of kids in there. The last thing I wanna do is be on this side of the room and not be able to. To see anything going on that other side. Once that, once that wall comes out, be able to clear out the space and and have some some vision lines where we need to see the kids, it'd be extremely helpful. Who is some of the side backs equipment? There's two pieces of every side backs equipment in that on the machine side. I don't think it's necessarily needed to have two of everything over there. So clear out a couple of those machines, free up some more space. I mean, it'd be very helpful for the students moving around.
Alright, so that's sort of option one. And again, certainly not, we're not here.
Quick, quick, Mike, where would you put those machines you're moving out?
There's a space outside where the old athletic department office used to be, that we could, we could put those in there, that's a separate room.
The ping pong alley?
No, it's like right, right outside the old athletic office.
Downstairs, downstairs?
Yeah, downstairs.
Yeah. Where the spin bikes are?
The spin bikes are now in the P fit room. So we have some older equipment in that space. Now we would, we probably don't either obsolete that or sell it. We've got some leg press machines down in there that are thirteen, twenty years old that we don't really need. So we could sort of maneuver things around to move some equipment down in the first floor. Alright, and again, the these next, this next slide is really just about a cost breakdown. And these are. Quotes that I've gotten. So it's just to give you a ballpark idea of what we're dealing with. Certainly not here asking for this amount of money, but we're just giving you the information of what we would be looking at. So. For option one, first off, you know, twenty thousand dollars for removal of the wall. And then approximately six thousand dollars for a company to come in, remove our old flooring. They'd have to sand down the concrete. And make it ready for the rubber, new rubber flooring, the new floor to be installed. So those are the prices that we've got for those two items. We have three, I can give you quotes on the floor. We have three different levels of flooring. From twenty seven thousand dollars, thirty one thousand five hundred and thirty four thousand. And I'll get into that in a little bit. Forty five new racks and equipment, twenty five thousand for bumper plates. I'll show you what those are in a minute. Your dumbbell seventy five and then deliberate installation. So that essentially is what we'd be looking at for for option one. Mike talked a little bit about option two, which would include moving the free and Olympic weight area down to the dance room. So we would not need to tear out the walls or the flooring for this option. So Mike, go ahead and talk a little bit about this.
Oh, this is a great option. It's actually a little bit bigger than the the free weight side over on the upstairs weight room. But we can get a lot of, a lot of racks in here. And again, some of these racks can include. Those lap hold on machines in there, so we could even have more rack space in here. And the rack space is vital, get fortified kids working on a rack. With those those bigger classes, because everybody works faces, kind of self contained, they can get everything they need done as efficient as possible. Um, nothing on the walls in there, so it's pretty clean. There's no. No big wall in the middle cutting off my vision to see what students are doing. There's a less cost of flooring too, because they're included upstairs. So that saves a couple thousand dollars just on that alone. It's a great space and it's underutilized in the district. For what we would do, that room would be used ten hours a day. Three hundred kids go through there.
Are the side backs machines still upstairs or?
Yeah, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need the side backs machines down there.
So PE class, would you use both?
No, we would be, we would use just this room.
Or for, I'm sorry, strength, not PE.
We would probably move a couple of treadmills and maybe elliptical down there. So if there's somebody that couldn't, you know, utilize the free or Olympic lift for the day, lifting schedule for the day, they could. If you get out a treadmill or elliptical. But as Mike said, this space is actually three thousand square feet as opposed to about twenty five hundred square feet. In the upstairs room. So it, until you actually are in the room and you take the measurements, you don't think that, you sort of think the dance room as. A smaller area, it's probably more to do with the ceiling height. That's the other thing we we took a hard, close look at was. Actually, the extension of the of the weights above, the ceilings are still tall enough to do everything we need to do in there and it gives us more space. More racks. And talking with Mr. Porcello, one of our biggest concerns again was the, is the classroom space first and foremost. That we can get, sometimes we have forty, fifty kids in an individual class. And we need to make sure, again, the whole idea behind the wall, knocking out the wall was so we can have vision of the entire space. And so if we're gonna move the space, we wanna make sure that we can fit forty, fifty people in. That space during a class period. And maybe we can do that with this layout. So here are just some, going over some terminology things where these are bumper plates. Mike, you wanna talk a little bit about what, how they're different than a standard?
Yeah, these, these bumper plates are urethane, so they're a lot, they're more solid than a typical rubber weight. And they're gonna be a little less durable than a steel plate, but they're gonna be, they're gonna look really nicer, stay really good shape for. A real, really long time. Right now, we have, I think, twenty different styles of forty five pound plates upstairs. So it's just a hodgepodge of all kinds of different things. This gives us a nice standardized look. I know our students get frustrated, really frustrating. We put all the stuff back in the rack where it belongs. They come in the morning and everything's moved around. They have to go reset the rack every day. And having something standardized that they come in, it's just, everything goes where it belongs. It's really helpful. Kids take a lot of pride in it when they do that. So it's, this is frustrating for them. This is a really, really good for the flooring options. So if you're dropping metal weights on on any type of flooring, it's gonna damage the flooring very quickly. This is one of the things that will preserve the form.
So again, in the last slider for the option number one, you can't even see all of it, but it comes out to about twenty five thousand dollars. For the sets of bumper plates that we would need to, for all of our racks. So again, we would use. Existing racks from the first, from the second floor right now, we would move approximately seven of those down. To the main floor and then look to purchase some more racks and new equipment. These were the bumper plates. That will cover all of that equipment. So this is just what, again, what. Is sort of out there, some of the new and newly designed things. This is Stray Dog Strength. Who we've, we've got, they're one of our vendors that we've gotten a quote from. And that's a double sided rack. Mike, if you wanna talk anything about how that works.
Yeah, it's the new enhances, the enhances that they have with bar storage. Right now, another problem upstairs is we have a lot of bars. There's. Really nowhere to put them. They're all leaning up against the walls. And I'm having these options where everything's in a self contained station. The kids don't have to carry. A bar halfway across the room that's at their rack, get it, get it set up as quick as possible. Saves a lot of time. You know where it's at. New racks, they have the lap one machine that's actually built right into the side of the, into the side of the rack. So now you don't have to have a separate. Lap hold on low roll machine. They get more space, it's right on the rack. Same space, more efficient, and the kids can be there. So not, not moving around the room as much. They have everything in a self contained spot.
So that's the latest greatest there. So there's a quick cost breakdown. Again, we're still in the twenty seven to thirty four range of the installation of the new floor. Because we have about five hundred square feet more, but it's still about the same price. As Mike said, it's, it'd be a little less to install because you don't have to carry it all upstairs. Everything else remains the same, minus the the wall and the expense to tear out. The existing floor. In our conversations with one vendor today. He, we talked to him about not having to tear out the wood floor, that we can actually, it's a, the wood floor is a floating floor. We can go right over top of that. We could choose to tear it out if you like, but that's, you know, we'll, we'll have some play with that as well. So. Again, that, that's where we end up with, with the total cost of one, approximately one sixteen. Option three, moving on right to our, our final option. We've got some wood platforms up there right now. You couldn't really see them in the video, but they are wearing away. The wood's chipping and peeling away a little bit. They are about fifteen years old. They need to be replaced. So at a minimum, we would need to replace those platforms. And there's really two options to do that. The horse, horse stall mats are there at the bottom. They're coming three eighths inch or three quarter inch thick. You know, we can put those over top of the wood, or they have new rubber platforms that, you know, we can, we can purchase. They're a little bit more expensive, obviously. But that's another option as well for, again, some safety concerns and things like that we've got up at the current space. So Mike, anything else that you wanna talk about and we'll entertain any questions?
There's been a lot of usences.
And the good news is a booster club, I forgot to mention that. They've been outstanding throughout this process when. You know, the boosters came up with the idea to raffle off a car, a three year lease, classic auto campus. And the Jeep dealership in Madison came together and gave us a three year lease. We raised around twenty thousand dollars. They committed twenty five thousand dollars. Whatever project we use. They'd like those, that twenty five thousand dollars to go towards the weight room in some way, shape or form. But they, they do have those funds available to get this project sort of jump started, so to speak. So. I wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. I'm sure most are. You've heard the scene, the car and all that kind of stuff. It was a successful, we're actually planning on doing it again at this moment, as of this moment. And again, I think we could work. On securing more funds that way. If we need to phase in this thing or whatever, again, we're open to ideas. We just wanna present the information. Answer any questions and then get feedback.
What is the turnaround of a rebuild? Like, what do you, I mean, what's the time? So if you would go into the dance room, one, what are the, that's, what are the folks that are using that?
So that's a good question. Our cheerleaders are the, are the one team that we have in there that use that room and that space. We've also, since I've gotten more involved with the PAC, obviously, we're trying to bring back with COVID, you know, going away. We're trying to bring back yoga, Pilates, boot camp classes and that, those types of things which would typically be in the dance room. We were essentially just transfer all of that up, up to. We're essentially just flip flopping spaces. So the existing rubber floor up there was, is gonna be, suit our cheerleaders mind for a practice type of a situation. And again, we'll probably make some enhancements through PAC budget and things to that room. But essentially, it's a, it's a twenty five hundred square foot wide open space that can be used for classes, yoga, et cetera, et cetera. And then that's sort of our idea when it comes to to that. But you couldn't use the side backs machine at the same time, right? You'd have, you know, that was.
Another option would be to move the equipment that was outside the old athletic office back upstairs over the free weight side now. And then you have that entire area downstairs.
So, big difference in flooring prices, I see. I'm not gonna get into the details about what, why they're so different, but just real quick, a couple of questions that came to mind. When you talked about some of the equipment that we currently have, would there be any sort of? Like a trade in? Do we trade anything in with the company we're purchasing from to save money or is that an option or not?
It's sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. We would use several of those racks upstairs and bring those downstairs. And that would save a, a chunk of money to help to start.
Like, what's the cost of a rack? Just one rack?
Uh, one dull side rack, I think it's like forty five hundred and the bench for it, another eight hundred.
We have how many?
And if you start adding the lap machine and all those things on, it becomes a. Almost, you know, a seven, eight thousand dollar piece of equipment once you add to all of the extensions. And again, about space conservation, that's what we were trying to do. And I'll pass these, I think, are, again, this is just one company. But you, you, you mentioned the flooring, you can pass those around.
And the wall, and you go back to the wall again, isn't there outlets and stuff in that wall upstairs or?
There are. There are outlets, there's, there's, there's piping, there's, it wouldn't give us, after, after looking into that option. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for, for doing that. We actually looked in the wall. And saw that there are existing pipes and duct work and things that we, you take the wall down, now you're gonna have to come and build. Some, you know, put drywall around those areas. So you're gonna have some columns of drywall. It's not gonna be a wide open free space. It's going to be segmented a little bit. It's gonna give Coach Christinger the vision that he. Needs to see both sides of the room. It's just not gonna give us the extra space that that we need.
Does the room, does the room downstairs, so it's what, three thousand square feet downstairs? So the folk, the, the, you know, cheer team, the Pilates, yoga, do they use that whole space? Like. Like, could we leave the upstairs configured with the wall in place, maybe upgrade the flooring at some point? But not rip that wall out and it's still not a lost space? Because then it would offer us two spaces.
Correct.
They, if, if you don't need all twenty five hundred square feet upstairs, it actually gives us two spaces versus one, which is one benefit and then. I just would want them to, you know, not be able to do what they need to do, but it seems to me like that would actually be outside. It's three thousand square feet, enough room for that many kids, that many students?
Yeah, if you look at the rack configuration, we can fit four to five kids at each rack.
You have so many square feet per student when you have students in a room?
No, the standard classroom's nine hundred square feet, if that's what's recommended, but ours aren't that anywhere in the district.
So, we're having how many kids at one time? Just trying to get that.
Well, and his strength conditioning, there's something between forty and fifty.
Okay, okay, alright, alright.
And even when we bring Chad's group up there, you know, the middle school PE classes are pretty, pretty large.
And putting inside the platforms or mats on top of the existing flooring, say in the dance room, that's still not gonna affect the height of anything too much?
It was pretty, I went in there today and I had to hold a stick up to the top to touch those things. So probably. Probably as high as the ceiling here, but the bottom would be, it's pretty close.
So you're saying if you put that rubber floor on and then, and then a platform?
Right, and then, yeah, you're saying how much more is it gonna take? We won't need a platform. With the flooring would replace the, the platform because it's so shock absorbing. And that's what the new, that's why flooring's so expensive to me. It's a, it's a, there's, well, there's three different quotes. There's a rolled rubber, it's like four, four foot width. And all the way you want. And, you know, one's eighteen millimeter stick. The other one, it comes in sections. So you've got like essentially squares that connect to each other. And what's nice about that piece of it, that's the most expensive, of course, is thirty four thousand. But if you have a problem with the floor or whether the subfloor, the wood floor or the, the rubber floor. You can take one piece out and replace it whereas opposed to.
And these are all different companies, so you're not into a bid situation.
Well, this, right now, the three quotes you have there are from one company, but we have quotes from Ecore, Stray Dog and Play. So we have, we have quotes. They're all comparable. They're all, all in that, in that ballpark.
These same quotes go for if you were to have to move duct work and all that stuff, or those three different companies?
So this, what this, for this flooring quote is just, just the flooring in the dance room.
And what's life expectancy?
Of flooring or the whole?
The whole project, you got your dream here. Would, would that be, will we still be alive when it?
It should be a, a good fifteen, fifteen to twenty years. Usually it's a full, full weight room.
Should send someone to the girls at all that are dancing here, see if that rubber flooring will affect their ability to do anything.
Well, cheerleading, we would essentially. No, I have not spoken to, I've spoken to our coach, but not the girls themselves. She would be okay. She's like, you know. Cheerleading wise, they don't need a dance for, to practice. To practice, you know, it's just the space that they have right now. It's, it's, it's actually a very nice space. Everybody knows it. Um, we're very lucky to have it. Sometimes, you know, unfortunately, cheers sort of all over the place in a hallway or whatever. They're, they're fortunate to have their own space. And we would be committed to making sure that they maintain their own space and that they weren't taking a step back. Um, because of this project. So whatever space that would be, whether it be the old athletic office that we turn into their space. Uh, or we just flip flop and said, you know, I send that dance room essentially upstairs where the current room is now.
Prefer the dance room option. If it's self-contained, no need to worry about. My classroom moving things around and changing things up all the time, but.
If, if that was the one that was decided on, you had that extra space upstairs. I know the question was brought up, well, can you? Can the other side be used? The side back machines can also be used if, say, the cheerleading team or some dance team is on the other side now. Would you want to add a barrier, like a door, something just so there's no distractions or have you used that how it could be used?
I still think the best option would be to move, move the stuff that's out the, outside the old athletic department office right now. Move that stuff up, the leg presses and some old hammer striking machines. Keep that dance, the cheerleading room outside that old athletic office. Kind of out of the way and.
As long as it's like an equally nice space, because you don't wanna shove, and I know some of the theater kids use that too for rehearsals for before the, the plays and things like that. Like, you don't wanna downgrade. But in the same regard, a lot of the cheerleaders play other sports and music strength.
What about access from the community? I think, would this stand, the dance room, weight room now be not, it would be athletic only and?
That's why we would leave upstairs, whether on the side back side or the other side. Or i- in the old athletic office, we would leave a couple of racks there. For those, because we do have members that wanna utilize the free weight Olympic side of things. Not a ton, but there are some. Um, and so we would make sure they would still have access.
Would that potentially allow us to open up our hours a little bit more for the weight rooms? I know right now we're kind of limited on the weight room because the kids are in there. We don't want the community and the kids in there really at the same time. Would that give us the option of adding more? Hours for the community to use the weights?
I think so. I think a lot of community members try to avoid those times because there's so many kids in there. They don't wanna.
So it sounds like you guys are looking for dual office space for the, for the yoga, Pilates, cheerleading, practice area.
I did run that by the cheerleading coach. I didn't run that space by her. I showed her, you know, I was just.
I'd almost like to suggest we leave that space like it is and use that as a workout room for the community to come in and use. And because we have silver sneaker opportunities, so it would be nice to have something right inside the door when they walk in. I know, you know, walking from the parking lot is bad enough, treacherous enough, and then going up the set of stairs. Um, so I don't know. I just think, I like the first floor idea for the, the community piece and for the silver sneakers opportunity too. Just to think about, I don't know. Is there, and is there another space that the cheerleaders or somebody else can, we have, it seems like that place is so cute. Just gotta be another room somewhere.
Right, ballboards or?
But you need the mirrors and the.
Yeah. And the field house is so crazy after school. You're trying to practice after school, you know, as a baseball coach. It's, you know, this time of year, it's insane. So, field house probably isn't an option. Yeah, the mirrors or something that.
Inside the, inside where the track is.
Yeah, that's the peak.
So the peak it room. And then there's another room before you get there on the right-hand side.
On the backside of the wall.
Where we had like daycare, we had a childcare, I think. Remember that little room? Off to the side before you go to the field house?
Smaller office size.
I guess these are things we have to work through. Oh, best case scenario is one sixteen, it looks like, hundred and sixteen thousand and you're saying? Boosters is contributing twenty-five thousand.
So a hundred thousand dollars that you're pretty much asking the board to allocate.
Boosters has committed to twenty-five thousand.
And the weight room would be open to all sports. I mean, I know people get weight room in their head and think immediately like football or wrestling or something, but all sports.
If you see any of our social media, like a Coach Mettler on a softball team, he credits a lot of success of their team to, to what they've done with Coach Christopher's class. So I don't care what the sport, I don't care what the, the gender, uh, age group, you know, we were trying to get the younger kids in there as well. It's really gonna serve us uh, a lot of Harry, uh, students, grades six through five, high, middle school, your high school, all those schools. A lot, a lot get touched by it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you. Um, all right, so next on our work session items is the rec board appointees. Um, which at our original organizational meeting, we had appointed two board members to our recreation board, which also participates on our senior center. On the board. And we since have heard um. Advice from legal counsel, um, that we were advised it would be best if we appointed two non-board members from, from our board. If we appointed someone other than our own existing board members. Um, so that has. Come up and just wanted to get a feel for if, you know, I guess what I would suggest or what I'd like to know is if we. If we wanted to take action on something in, in the near future, maybe at our next meeting or a month from now, because I don't think the rec board has a meeting until March maybe. Leave our, leave our two appointed people currently until we figure out um if, if this is something we wanna do or not, moving forward.
Yeah, I can tell you that when I've talked to other boards, um, members from other boards, what they do, they, they don't really have on other boards like that. They don't have. Their board members sit on those boards. They appoint people, but they do a um, application process and then they vote on who they want to be their representatives. So something to explore and consider.
I think after everything that I read, um, I think it would, it's best for us to separate ourselves. Appoint others who are not on the board to.
So we can try to figure out an application process and then have a vote.
Yeah, I, I, you know, since the meeting, I do think it would be um, something to think about. If we appointed one who is more athlete, youth program focused and another one that's focused on the senior center. Just because budgetary, budgetarily, I think. Aren't they separate?
No, no. All the employees for both and um.
Move forward at the next meeting.
Some kind of application.
Yeah, and start accepting applications and advertise for it.
So for now, you guys would, the two people. Just a thought, just wanted to bring that up and see if everybody thought about that. All right, moving on, uh, the twenty twenty-three budget, I think that would be Mr. Valant's main topic.
So we're starting our budgeting process next week. And, and we've talked a lot the last couple of years about the staff we've added uh during COVID. To kind of keep the numbers low in classrooms, we've talked about. And you've heard from, from the athletic departments on, on some of their leads. And you've heard from all the great things all, that are happening in all of three buildings. Um, Ariana talked about their pilot program they're doing. Bob talked about how he's doing things and you heard today from Todd, that he sort of valued all the kids. But there's a budget to all of that too. So our budget is currently calling for upwards of a million and a half dollars. To three million dollars in deficit spending in each of the next four years. So it's all great programming. It's all good for kids. But what direction really does the board want us to go with? Balancing a budget with, you know, wh- where do we go? Because they. They find the base of each other. We all do great things for kids, but you gotta do it with, with the money you have. Now, we have a very healthy cash balance north of twenty million dollars. It's not gonna stay there forever. And we need to put a plan in place at some point. So as we start, and we, and we told our, our principals that, you know. We have these extra staff members we added. Our Roman has gone down. We're gonna have conversations starting is it next week? And we just kind of want some direction from the board as to where you want us to be at the end of this budgeting process. That's the hard part of the conversation. It's great hearing all the other stuff. But there's a reality to it as well. And, and, and we really have to kind of figure out where that all comes together.
And um, you're, we're taking account into the grants that we received because I think we saw there the.
Over the last five years.
A lot of those grants provide for supplemental activities that go beyond the school. They, they work with kids to, well, I mean, the, the, the house flipping. Is, it is, is kind of a classic. It didn't pay for the teacher, didn't pay for all the, the house. Well, you, you have to pay for the house, actually pay for all the renovation of the house. Um, and we talked about the sustaining of that. By the sale of the house. That, that we get. And so, so, you know, that, that's kind of a project. We have, um, I think Bob talked about the, the level of staffing in his building and everything else and, and, and as, as did. The pilot at, at, at the elementary and, and. But it's causing deficit spending. And, and so we, we deficit spent just barely last year. This year, we're gonna be seven, eight hundred thousand dollars in the red. Which we knew because we, we maintained all that, I've called the COVID staff, that really isn't it. And the, the COVID monies, we, we push as much or we can and cover everything. But. But as we continue to move forward and, and the pressure's on, on costs and inflation and everything we have in place, where are we going over the next three or four years?
You just said what, how much extra did we spend in order to keep our doors open last year? Um, because we wanted to be able to provide smaller class sizes and stay open.
One point one million a year.
One point one million is what we added each year.
For the last two years.
For the last two years.
Again, the S for funds covered a large part of it. And when the board made the decision to do it, we said, hey, we're gonna do it for kids to keep schools open. But the federal government came and said, we're gonna give you guys, you know, over the couple of years, you know, one point eight million or something like that, but it didn't cover everything. So, so there's, there's, there's a piece there that.
Came out of our own.
We, but, but that was a bonus because we, we, we said at the time, you know what, we have a cash balance. This, the time to use it in, in a pandemic or something like that. So, you know, we're, we're all good with that. What are we doing moving forward? And, and where do you guys wanna see us?
He already said it doesn't just go away. I mean, without cutting a significant amount that would directly impact it.
Eighty-five percent, I just looked at it today, eighty-five percent of our dollars, our revenues are spent on salaries and benefits. Now, in most school districts, that's the higher end limit. But for us, we also spend a significant amount of dollars in maintenance of the facility because of. We have the, the all glass and we have the higher ceilings. We have the CFC pack. And so a higher percentage of our dollars goes to maintaining the facilities in most districts. So. Because that's about five percent or so of our total budget, we should really be on the low side of that. Of the eighty to eighty-five is typically the, the range.
Our projected enrollment in the district, our members, um, we have a projection of where we are with enrollment of students. Projection on. So that the Lake County numbers and data came out right and it showed all the trends in the communities all trending down. Everywhere. So I'm just.
I think over the last five years or so, we've gone from helping out eighteen fifty to fifteen.
Now, we don't feel like that's gonna, that sharp decline's gonna continue. It's going to level off some, but you know, we're, you know, we're looking at between eighty-five and ninety-five kindergarten each year coming in. Now, the trend historically has been, we actually increase our enrollment by class as they go through a little bit. So we gain some. And so, you know, we could flatline, I mean, the worst case scenario, curl one, twelve hundred, probably. Thirteen hundred, twelve hundred. I think we're getting close, don't you, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I, I actually think we'll, we'll flatline a little higher than that. Well, compared to others, you know, if you look at our, our developments that, that had kids and it was, it was Red Mill and it was uh, Dugans. The people living those houses now aren't the parents of the three or four kids, some excluded. But it's, it's the parents and the kids are all off to school, college or, or gone. And the parents are still there and, and, and they're gonna be there till they, till they move to Florida or till they move somewhere else. And so we, we have a, we have a down cycle for a while. And, and, and we have a couple of housing developments that, but not. I don't know how many kids that's gonna bring in. We'll, we'll see. I think it's, I think it's a one point five.
So with the extra staffing that we acquired during this pandemic and everything like that. This goes away, you know? How, how much of that would be saved?
About one point one million.
Per year.
Per year. And so, so if you look at next year, if we're a million and a half or so, one point six, I think it was, in the red and, and you cut out that at one point one. You're still gonna run some deficits next year. The following year though, that one point six or seven is, is two point five because we have costs with salaries going. There'll be another budget bill. And, and so. We technically can get a, a bump if they, if they fund the next two years of the, of the new formula. I don't know if they're gonna do that or not. Um, but, you know, I, I don't. I, I don't know if they have the money for that. I don't think, they, they might, because they have a lot of federal funds too. And so, doesn't that give them the ability to fund the next two years of that cycle? The, the, the thing that. That we worry about, the same thing they should be worried about is, when you get the one-time dollars from the federal government, they're not sustainable over time. They're one-time dollars. So we use them for that staff. But, but now that that's going away, that becomes general fund money. And that's, and that's where, you know.
Yeah, prior to the pandemic, we made some pretty decent uh, uh, I guess gap closing. Measures to attrition. We under, you know, we have a, we have a, you know, an aging workforce in the, in the district. And, and as uh, teachers retired and staff retired, we made every effort to try to be creative and not replace.
I remember we had about fourteen, I think, total, thirteen or fourteen total positions that we didn't refill.
Here's the other, here's the other piece now is, is, and you know this tip is, the state retirement system says. Hey, there's a phase in that, that you have to work longer to get to that, that full retirement. And so people aren't retiring at eight, at thirty years, at age fifty-two anymore. They're, they're working their way up to thirty-five years, thirty-eight years. The, the age sixty. At the top of our pay scale is, starts at year eighteen or nineteen. And so we have teachers at the top of that pay scale for an extra five to eight years. Is there, there's talk of STRS potentially.
And Penny told you shopping over that ego yesterday. There was a legislation.
Those that didn't qualify the first time won't qualify the second time either.
But, 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 so here's STRS is that the last time around, when they had, when the stock market was, was really good. They gave retirees a thirteenth check. They gave away eight billion dollars. So then what happened is they said, stock market goes down and they say, hey, we're short. We gotta re-figure that calculation, make everybody work longer. And that's, that's not a good way of doing business, but that's where we're at right now. And now we're, we're.
We're also in a place where teachers are leaving a profession. So do we anticipate? Definitely not saying I want that to happen, but do we expect that to happen?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that if you get attrition in that way, if somebody leaves. We're gonna replace them and, and, and there might be a saving of dollars for, for a couple of years to do that. But. But, but I, I think, so, so yeah, you, you can get some savings there. You're not gonna get a million and a half or two million dollars in savings and stuff like that.
I'm guessing that if anybody would leave a profession, it would be people that probably haven't been in ten years or.
You know what, you get some. You get some who are at the front end and say, hey, this isn't the career for me to change. You get some in the middle of the career and say, hey, I'm moving on to administration, and you get some on the back end and say, hey, I'm retired or I'm burnt out.
Yeah, it's been a rough couple of years.
So, and we're not out, there's gonna be some bob in these years too, so when you talk about the thing you talk about. And the not only about numbers of kids, the kin- kindgy demographic of children and their needs. Um, our our kids' needs aren't gonna be less. You know, emotional stability, those type of things, you know, there's some trauma, there's some damage that that we wanna address. Um, and so, you know, we're and you're not just talking about, you know, poverty going from seven percent in this district to over thirty percent now. Over the last, you know, fourteen years, and and those kids have different needs that need more resource. Um, and they deserve that, so it's a, it's it's a yin and yang, a give and take that, you know. Lou and I, you know, work with pretty well together all the time on how.
This is, this is our one, our one area that we really struggle with. Uh, we we both want what's good for kids, and all this stuff is great for kids. But it comes at a cost and and it comes at a cost to our taxpayers, and and. I'm charged by you to tell you when we have deficits and. It's time to do something about it. We do something about it, but I. I I I'm looking for your direction here, I mean, you know, we talked about i- in my evaluation, you know, let's 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 look at how we're going to. Look at different process budgeting outfit. We could. We could look at that budget process, we could say, hey, look, do you want a a balanced budget? And we could run through that scenario, but. When you make those cuts, you're you're gonna have some some programs that are impacted.
And and I think our district has done a fantastic job with shared services with districts, and we've cut costs extensively, right? In in many ways.
But but. But even there, there's just not much room for me. But we have, we have some, we have some places that that we know that. We can make adjustments, you know, we we could look at class sizes, we could look at something, but. We know that we space kids out, we know we lower some class size, we know we have some people we can move around and everything else, but. Getting to a million and a half, getting to two million, getting to a half million, whatever it is down the road, is a difficult task, so. So, yes, we'd save money, we'll continue to find ways to become more efficient and save money. But in those areas. In those shared service areas. The thought, we 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 have some share and transportation, we have some shared physical services, we have some shared and maintenance services.
And that's kind of what I'm saying, is is there is there more opportunity for us to share in another capacity? I know right now, like with some of the programming.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna, by share, using the shared service, you're not gonna save one point three million.
Yeah, so so if we if we can find a hundred thousand there, that that that's great, that's not moving the dial. In the big picture.
I'm just trying to chip away. I'm not looking for a million and a half to save, I mean, I mean, other than we know the one big increase was was the additional staff that we hired. So I think without. Without much discussion, isn't that the first place to start?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, any of that would make sense. With all of our facilities, is there potential to downsize our facility? I mean, we have all these buildings that we use in a limited basis, can we consolidate?
Jack, I I I don't. I I don't know the answer, I mean.
I mean, it's something to think about.
You reduce number of classroom teachers.
What is that?
Due to.
But Manchester, we have rented out and we're probably covering, with the exception of. Of our kids are using the one wing for the, uh, the solder training class. We have another, the north hallway and and part of the south hallway rented out. We probably only have five or six classrooms that aren't rented out.
In Manchester.
In Manchester.
What about here?
And here we have, we have everything down there running through. One of our, one of our things that we are gonna be pricing out is is preschool, moving them over to the other building. And giving us a little more flexibility over here.
Is that something we could absorb as well?
It's our, it's our reader, that one is, yes.
And I I would think. I would think in a five-year range, we need to figure out. How old are we to cut back on. Facilities cost, whether it's shutting this building down, rearranging, shutting down Manchester West, what the cost would be there. Um, and then I think at the end of the day, there's gonna have to be some difficult decisions made and saying. Look, these, we love offering opportunities to our kids, but these are the opportunities that just. You don't have the numbers to continue supporting these programs, I mean, it's. At the end of the day, it it stinks to have to make that decision, but we can't keep doing that. So unless the the community's going to.
So so let me put out kind of some of the discussions that we've had, is we look at. We, again, we talked about that chunk of people that that we know we've added. We have people over the next two or three years who may be leaving through attrition or anything else. And and so we know that there's there's some some movement that happens every year, and and so. Maybe we do it over a three-year period and try to get to a to a number. In each of the three years. And and maybe it doesn't balance, but at least we know, because at some point you're affecting program. Probably after year one, you're.
I think we, yeah, we have to accept, it's not gonna balance right away, but if we're moving in the right direction, I'm comfortable with that.
Or at least plateau. We, if if we're.
Costs of doing business continues to go up.
That's the hard part is that, is that if you cut a million dollars out. And your half million dollars. You know, deficits, the next year, you're predicting two million dollar deficit, and your one million is one point one, so you're still widening that gap, but. We're not near, we're not near time for loving, so so I don't wanna put that on the table right now, but there's a time that says. Once you make reductions and you start impacting programming. And you no longer have the operational funds, which we do have. You have to get to a point that says, it becomes this programming that is valuable to our community. Or not, because you only have so many dollars to cover, and so maybe that. Maybe you look at a three-year plan for what we have for our our staffing and our. Existing program and how we could manage that within our student population, and then that three years after that, we start talking about.
Do you have a discussion about allocation of cash balance? I mean, you know, that's that's another way to look at it. So you know that you're carving into this cash balance. What do we need earmarked for this stuff? We've, you know, with, you know, in the past, we've planned for capital improvements and we, you know, we've done those things. And, you know, as you forecast the needs, you know, you sort of allocate that cash balance and you put it into places and then. Then you kind of know when you hit that point, that point of needing to go and do something.
And and the cost of maintaining, like I said, the buildings, that even though we're renting them out, but there's also gotta be a capital improvement need in those two, and we have to look at. You know, like the new roof we've talked about.
And 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 so we have, we have, we have a lot of those already earmarked, and and so. You know, we get, we get Jim's plan and we we look at that, we push things out and we and move things up depending on health and safety and everything else. And. And then you hear the discussion tonight, we're talking about weight rooms, and and there's a cost to it, and. And so you have to make a judgment to, is this something that we're gonna allocate funds to, and how much? Or is it something that you take it to raise funds on? I I I don't know, it's good for kids, but at what cost? And and I I should put that on your radar that that, you know, and I think. Next board meeting, we're we're coming to you for some infrastructure on technology. Now, it's 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 E-rate discounted, but it but it's, but you know, some of our infrastructure here is 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 getting old and we're looking at that as well. Capital projects, fund.
Phone system.
Phone systems.
Those are kind of a must have.
Those. Those are, those have a turnaround of five, six years, that's right.
But but I, but I, so, so, I don't, I don't like having discussions about. Any of these things in a silo away from everything else. These are all things that should be brought to the table at the same time and say, hey, let's prioritize each of these, and. Yes, we have money for this, and no, we don't have money for this, because this one has to come first. And and so that that's what I would propose is is that we look at staffing and program levels over the first three years and try to. To to get to. It'd be nice to say. Target dollar amount. But we could just, we could just look at that and 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 help some recommendations.
I would, I would like that, I mean, if you're saying that the next board meeting, you come in and say, um, look at programming over three-year period, right? And make some projections on where we would be with programming and what your recommendations would be in terms of. Areas like you mentioned the phones or you mentioned the the technology and.
So.
All of that.
Cause a lot of those, and and we we can spell it out, because a lot of those, those projects. We have money in that capital project fund for. The operational things. The programming of students is general fund, and those are the things that that that's really where where we're starting to. To widen the deficit gap well.
There's lots of areas that we subsidize, and you can start to break that down, you know, they could just, you know, look at athletics and, you know, look at. Look at, I mean, you could see where it wouldn't take that much to really show where the money's falling as far as.
Yeah, I mean, what's our our budget for athletics a year? We have twenty different sports, right? So we talk about transportation, we're employing coaches, we're. The facilities, all the operations of that, the uniform costs, all that.
We we have, they come, well, so there's support in the boosters, there's support from all our gate receipts and everything else, but but we subsidize. That by, you know, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year. And.
So would the um, adjustment for the weight room and making that change at the at the pack, if we did that? If we said it was a hundred thousand dollars, that's ballpark number, um, so is that basically saying that we would be doubling our athletic budget this year?
Yes.
Doubling? Or more than double.
But you look at the law, and you so when you spend to the other pieces, and I I got my financial per, but. The long term, the longevity, sustainability of your, of what are you gonna give for that dollar, right? When we do our Chromebook refresh, was what, two board meetings ago, I think, what, it was a seventy thousand dollar approval? That's a couple of years, right, you know, and then, and, you know, our community benefits, our kids benefit big time for that, but that's. That that that's.
Is that all, is that awesome, though, about the fees?
No, because. The Chromebook fees. The the tech tech fees.
The tech fees, what?
But but on top of the Chromebook itself, we have the cost of the software that goes on, the the uh, the security. What's the name of that program we use? Go Tribe. The the printers that are tied into that when they get yours, so so there's a lot of other costs. That get tied into that, a sixty-dollar fee really costs us a hundred and seventeen or something.
Government costs the hardware.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I know you kept saying, you know, we're not there yet, levy-wise, right, to the community, if we're on this current course. Project, can you project how far out it would be like, okay, we might be approaching a levy ten years from now, five years.
Look, I'll put it this way, the the problem is you can't just stick to this course because. When, if you follow that course that goes, uh, made up numbers, a million deficit, two million deficit, three million deficit, four million deficit, five million deficit. You get to that point out here where you've gone through your 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 years to eat up that money. But but now you're running a five million dollar a year operating deficit, and you can't make enough cuts or raise enough money to cover that.
Right.
So so that's why you get ahead of it, and that's why this is really our first year. Of deficit spending coming up, this year that we're in, again, because of the additional staff, but next year. And that's why it's time to start having those conversations.
We also need to determine how far we're going to cut back into there, you know, what's, at the end of this, there's a rainy day fund that we really do need to leave. We're not gonna burn through all twenty million, right? So we're gonna say, how how much at the end of this are we going to leave and then work backwards from there? And and, you know, start with the end in mind.
Well, like Jack said, it's, at what point do you cross? And say, yeah, that now we have to go out that way.
Jesse, to answer your question is, it would probably be. Two thousand twenty-eight or twenty-nine. If we did nothing. And so what I'd rather do is do something.
Yeah, absolutely.
And and push it out, because I don't wanna be on the ballot, none of our taxpayers wants on the ballot. I don't think you guys really wanna be on the ballot, but I also want to provide good programming for our kids, and we, where's that balance? Because as Jack would say, we wanna be the destination where people wanna bring their kids, so you can't have that by cutting all your program.
When you get back to like staffing, I mean, how often are, you know, are buyouts? You know, look, I mean, how often are we?
We can't really do, we can't do buyouts.
Okay.
Under STRS, new state laws, you cannot buy out service time of of professional staff members. You could offer retirement incentives. But I would probably say that most of those people probably wouldn't take it because they, there's an actuarial reduction to which you get after retirement. And it's such a steep drop-off, it'd be very hard to look at, I I. I don't know the way that that I could say to do most of the good deal. And still be this responsible.
Some more discussion.
So we'll start our staffing stuff this week. We will come up with staffing-wise. Kind of our, our, I I I do our our needs versus. The additional program that are not necessarily need, but but great for kids, and then. On the non-staffing side, we could come up with other areas of of maybe where we could. Look at being more efficient in our budget. And that might mean that that we tell Jim Smith that, hey, you're gonna do something different with. Plowing or different, different with lawn care, something different with, but we'll have those conversations with you guys, we're not gonna say no more lawn care. Cause the campus looks great, but but maybe there's some other options out there that that, on how we do business, and I just use Jim and he's listening. It just as an example, because it's something that, as I look at it, we're doing, but but we can have some conversations on budget and programming and everything else. As well as staffing. We we, you know, we're, we're committed on our, on our. On our staffing numbers over the next forty years, which is actually a good thing because we know where we're gonna be. And so it helps us, um, plan for budget, so.
I do think we need to look at facilities with a critical eye, it just seems strange for a district that's lost a quarter of its student population that we have. Acres and acres. Building, we we use the space because we have it and it's nice to have it, but it's like, I have all this room, fill it. And and I think that's something that's gonna have a trail on it where if if we decide that we need to juggle. Uh, programming or tenants around, they're gonna need ample time to plan, and and I don't think it's too too really to start thinking about that.
Oh, we can talk about, and maybe it's something that we start putting on our work sessions. You know, we started assessing different areas of the operations.
I'd like to do that anyways, I mean, as I was actually gonna suggest that we kind of do a, I don't like the term audit, because I know that means something different to you, but. Just a a kind of an audit of our space where we. Like our little field trip is a board and we we literally go around to the build, through the buildings and look at what we're using and what are, what spaces we have. I don't even know what all the spaces are that are being used in the, in the nooks and crannies, yeah, and there are rooms. I don't even know what all the spaces are that are being used in the in the nooks and crannies, yeah, and there are rooms.
Maps where.
Yeah, or, yeah, even if it's. They're virtual, I guess, tour, but you know, like physically going in, um, some type of tour of what do we have, what's there? You know, what what are we using this space for? Um, I think that would be a.
For instance, I could give you a. A rundown of of this building and say, here's who's in it, here's what it's used for, here's what it costs us. And here's where revenue is coming in in this building, with the same thing with the other building and.
Yeah.
And then and then we'll have a better handle on that and so.
I I just remember when it first came, I thought it was pretty radical feeling to see the, you know, the reduction in enrollment and remember we did the compression. Dream where we thought maybe the high school could become an early college high school and we do compression planning and push to all of our kids. Uh, one through nine, one through ten into the middle on elementary. And then have like Ohio State now over there as that campus like it's a, it's it's nice enough to be a small college campus. You know, go to go to Ohio State, dance field or any of those areas, go to Lake Erie.
Yeah, yeah, very nice facilities.
You know.
Well, if we're going to have early colleges, we got to upgrade the weight room.
Property that we give away to the village.
The D four, the new D four sports.
Okay, we'll we'll start, we'll start putting some together some some areas that will help and 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 we'll do it over a two or three year period. And then we'll start bringing that stuff to you as well as. As well as the the buildings, staffing probably has to come first because. That's the biggest part of our budget and and.
That's where we started, changing the mindset and Dr. Rocheski's done a good job about this concept of, you know, sharing your staffing. We're one campus and we should be able to blend somewhat our student body and and get a better, you know, a better proportion of. Case management versus staff person instead of having that luxury of being staying separate.
We started some of that compression with looking at explorer for subjects at the high school that weren't actually filled to the capacity. And also seeing how we can share new high school staff and kind of support for it for us. And that started this year, but there's more work to be done.
Like a bus route.
Yeah.
Really, you know.
As as an example. But let's give you an example of transportation, conversations.
Don't worry.
We transport every kid.
Every kid.
And. And. We also know that there's only. Forty kids on a bus. Because because we're we're. We do have some distance to to cover and we tried to keep our routes to thirty, thirty-five minutes to make sure kids aren't on the bus. Well, you could change that model and you could say, well, maybe we move out to a half a mile or a mile or whatever that is. Maybe you, that's just one option. One, one is you put fifty kids on a bus instead of forty kids on a bus. Maybe you say we're going to extend the route times by five minutes or ten minutes because then you could put more kids on a bus. We can't find drivers anyways.
Right.
So if we go from sixteen to fourteen drivers, we're not getting rid of any drivers, we're just meeting the needs that we have, the staff that we already have. And but those are, those are conversations that that we can have.
And I say be careful about the age groups that you put on a bus.
Yeah.
I don't want my.
There's legislations that come with that too because if you add ten minutes, it changes your bell schedules. And then it changes how long staff members have to be here because they have to be here. After they drop off the high school, middle school, they come back to the elementary and and now it'll get out on time and so it's a longer, so.
Now we're negotiating.
Yeah. So it's not all easy to say we can do it, but we can run some scenarios and and see how that works.
Yeah.
And that that's what our job is to figure that out.
So when we host events, say like we hosted Curly during the playoffs for football this year, what's the cost? You know, benefit when we, something like that occurs.
So when we host a.
Like we hosted a playoff football game for the first time in years and it was packed and sold out and we charged for parking and.
Yeah, so we get, we get a, TJ knows the numbers better than me, on on what. We get so much of the pre-sale or so much of the.
Watch for the district, who makes money are the boosters and the whoever's doing the parking and who's doing the concessions, that's where the profits are made. So then it goes into, it goes into those accounts.
We might, yeah, make, we might make a thousand bucks or something like that, but you're right. We get, you know, if you get a.
The baseball.
Yeah, they're selling tickets and and the boosters make three thousand dollars in concessions or five thousand concessions and. And so that typically finds its way back to our athletic department.
To our kids.
Yeah.
Because now they get to go to spring trip, but at lesser cost, you know.
But but it's, but O H S A gives you a hosting fee and then you get a certain percentage of it. Again, I don't know if it's pre-sale or if it's if it's the game day.
I mean, it sounds like it's worth it overall for the district because the other, you know, teams or boosters, they're they're getting money.
Yeah.
So, okay.
And some districts, I don't know, do we charge parking on?
It's an advantage for our kids too.
No, no, I know. So, yeah, that's where you pick us up. They're not, those aren't, they're they're not as big as you might think.
No. But every little bit helps, right?
Absolutely.
So you're you're going to start bringing those to us and we'll sort of work item, we'll put that as an item on our on our work session agenda, agenda genome. Where we include budget and just look at. Space and everything we're talking about, facilities.
Yeah, we'll hit departments, we'll hit.
Everything.
You know, staffing, we'll hit, you know.
You know, a lot of the funding formula, and by the way, Representative Calder will be here tomorrow and and will make it very clear that we're in deficit spending. And we appreciate his help down there, but. The funding formula, the uh, the Cup Patterson version, remember, was going to pay you per by personnel. Now, that was how they they built it, saying, you know, just with this many kids, it's, you know, typical, we're going to come, you know, cover one guidance counselor, two guidance counselors, one this, one that. And that's how they were trying to build equity in the funding formula and I, it didn't get there. But it is a thought that's happening down at the, you know, the state and Representative Calder is carrying that torch.
Yeah, and and so when when you. When you have those those. It's built in the formula, but it's a phase in over six years and and the and the Senate only funded it for two years. So. The next biennial would give us phase in years three and four. And that's where I'm not sure they have sustainable funds to to put in and I, I have not heard a whisper as to where they're going with that, but you're right. Representative Calender is a is a very powerful person in in making that happen.
All right. Are we ready to include this portion of our discussion? Yeah, to be continued. Next on the agenda item was the eighth grade field trips in lieu of the DC trip, so I think we had an attachment that gave a recommendation of where they were thinking about.
Right, uh, when last we met, uh, we had some discussion about, unfortunately, we held on on as long as we could, but. We just could not handle logistics of taking kids to Washington DC and so, you know, the board had asked, uh, Mr. Chisholm and Mr. Nys to come up with some alternatives. And and so that's what that memo is providing is where they're at with their thoughts. Um, it's a, it's a day trip to Columbus. Um, a day trip to, they've got a deal going with the Cleveland Guardians where they can, where they'll get the parish room for the entire game. And the bleacher seat and the spring dance is is.
Are the kids aware of this? Are they on board?
Well, again, I I think there's, you know, I don't know how much kids have been involved in this preliminary discussion, but they want to get this to you. As soon as possible, they kind of, so you knew the direction they were going as far as. Um, trying to, you know, make some lasting memories with these new scores. Because of what they've had to, you know, miss based on mutations that's happened. So that's where that's at. Uh, Mr. Chisholm, I don't know if he's. See with us?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and like some of the other things that have happened, like cancel the the winter dance. You know, we've just kind of been pouring over this still for the last few weeks and. You know, Jesse, you know, can speak to it too with an eighth grade daughter who missed sixth grade camp. You know, this stuff is is really affected us and really bothered us and we really worked through it. And we dealt with the same thing last year with eighth grade and I think put together some some really fun events for kids. Last year and I feel like we were in a position where we can really do the same, you know, there's absolutely no reason. You know, why we can't, you know, have some really incredible, you know, ending moments here for these kiddos. Um, but yeah, the logistics of it have just seemed improbable. You know, bring in a hundred and twenty kids, you know, with busing and some of the procedures we were having to go through with tourist destinations and the tour company and the buses, so. But to answer Nikki's question, um, I just, we wanted to bring this stuff, you know, to you guys first, so we haven't had, you know, kids involved too much in the conversation. And I think the kids, for the most part, have a sense of understanding that it's probably not going to come together, um, which is disappointing. But I am super optimistic about what we have in place. I think the Guardians game is going to be a blast. I met with student council last week to talk about the spring dance carnival. So we're going to kind of turn that spring, that winter dance into more of like a spring carnival dance with a ton of like outdoor activities. You know, carnival games and, you know, inflatables and a movie night and the student council is going to kind of handle that. Trucks, we're going to try and do it right and make some really incredible events for the kids, but that's where we're at.
Or is that dance, that's for six through eight then, correct?
It is six through eight with presents kind of an interesting challenge, you know, we want to make it super memorable for the eighth graders specifically. And that's not going to preclude us from doing a nice end of the year event for the eighth grade because that's earlier in the month of May. Last year we did the, um, we did the clap out with cars, which is what we did that spring quarantine year the year prior and it turned out really well. And we ended up having like a big party in the pack afterwards. And so we could still duplicate something like that when are talking about it, it's just a, you know, complete and final recap for those eighth graders. But that the dance is traditionally that winter dance is six through eight. But turning it into like, you know, a kind of a true, you know, spring carnival dance is the student council is super excited about it. They had really great ideas and I think we can do some really special stuff for the eighth grade. So, you know, we're, we have some pretty high spirits about, you know, putting good energy into these events. The terrace club sounds like it's going to be a great time for the kids. But that's. That's kind of where we're at.
What about, so with the, uh, it's hard to say, Guardians, Indians game, whatever we want, about the Cleveland baseball game. So. I mean, would sort of, uh, you know, be a backup plans at all, you know, whether with it rains or rain out or something? Or the lockout doesn't end in time and that messes up the schedule for MLB this year?
Yeah, so, um, well, you know, if it rains and goes on a delay, we've got the terrace club for the whole event, so we'll be indoors. So there's, you know, the details are, you know, kind of an an all you can eat, you know, buffet for the kids prior to the game, early entrance. They can stay in the terrace club the whole game, so if there's rain, you know, that I think that'll be totally fine for the the kids, but if it delays out, the game gets postponed. You know, last year our eighth grade, we took a day trip at the end of the year, we took a day trip to C Point and had us for super great time. So there's events that we can kind of, that we can put together. You know, locally, day, these day trips that, you know, we still have good plans for in the event that, you know, for some reason this falls through. Um, but that is, you know, for this part right now, at least, Plan A.
Is um, is sixth grade camp happening this year?
Uh, I don't actually know the answer to that question. I know that Bob.
Is there any chance, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I don't need to, um, is there any chance of getting eighth graders along on something like that? Because I know that's, it's the independence and the. That kind of experience that. I hate to say the best.
Well, the, you know, the purpose of sixth grade, sixth grade camp is really like an inquiry based, like science experiments when they're out there at camp. So the last I heard that conversation, that's a Bob Nysley and a Jeff Perry and a Jeff Miller conversation. Jeff and Jeff are are the planners for that. They've been talking about going out there during the day and coming back and going out, coming back. But that camp at least, I know that is about like inquiry, science-based experiments and we generally like to keep the eighth grade. Activities at the end, just about, really about joy. You know, the DC trip is supposed to be specific, it's really more of like a historical tour, so we've talked about doing historical tours more locally. They used to do kind of the Ohio tour. But, you know, i- is it as an end of the year celebration, you know, it doesn't. Make a good whole rhyme or reason to have something that's tied specifically to. Either science inquiry or, you know, social studies.
I think for the kids, it's, I I know it's the learning and and that's what we're here for and everything, but for the kids' experience, I I know the overnight piece is a huge part for the kids.
Yeah.
I agree. So if there's any way, and I love what you guys are doing and I appreciate, I know it's a lot of work and everything, but if there's any way, even on a Columbus trip where it's only two and a half hours away. So if there was an emergency parent and you get down there, is there a way to do something like that to turn it?
Well, you know, the other, you know, the other issue you, you know, you run into is that this is, you know, these events are, you know, this is a cooperation between. You know, schools, this, you know, the school board, the students, administration and the teachers that chaperon these events. You know, so I don't bring these plans, these alternative plans lightly. You know, these are students that I care very deeply for and want more than anything to have these, you know, really rich experiences. And I've, you know, I've gone on tons of overnights with kids, you know, when I was in Mayfield, we went to Chicago and New York. I mean, I I've seen how much fun gets having these events. But, you know, there are some logistical realities about not only the event circumstances themselves, but also. You know, what your chaperones are willing to do and what they want, you know, what they're willing to take on. And so then you, you know, you kind of run into this hole of whether or not you're going to then insist on doing these things. You know, without your school-based chaperones, um, you know, and you can have some discussions about, you know, parent-sponsored trips and. You know, and parent chaperones, but, you know, I guess I submit these recommendations with a full understanding of where my staff is at. And what their feelings are, um, you know, as as generally the adult moderators for these sorts of things.
No, I just, I couldn't go without asking because that's what's been asked of me by many community members is what's the possibility of overnight trips? I understand you put a ton of work into it and explored all these options. I just want to, I couldn't not ask you.
And I guess I I, and I appreciate that too, that you guys have done, looked at other options and alternatives and, um, I think. And when when I saw this come out just the other day when it was sent to me, um, April fourteenth is a Thursday, so that's the Thursday, the day before Good Friday, before there's no school. Is that generally not a well-attended day, I guess, because don't, you know, the kids have a long weekend and some families travel for the holiday? Just just a thought, I just wasn't sure if that would be.
Yeah, so we we thought about that and I and I, I hate two things. One, I hate that, you know, that we have to use that day and two, that I hate that it's coming to parents so late. You know, we, myself and Mr. Nemeczek were really sitting on some information coming from some, um, some DC sites that were providing us with feedback. And the time has just really ticked by here, but ultimately the reason we landed on that date was because, like many things, there are no drivers. Um, and the tour companies themselves have no drivers, um, and so we. We essentially found ourselves in a position, as did many school systems, with almost exclusively limited dates. Where the tour companies would actually supply drivers. And so that was the only, there was essentially no Fridays between now and the end of the school year where they were willing to. Where they they had the availability to provide staffing, that was the only day that Thursday. And doing, you know, one of those trips, you know, into the weekday just didn't seem like a, and I don't even know if there were weekday dates, the dates were extremely limited. And not because we were sitting on it for so long, but essentially because the tour companies don't have people either. But I don't disagree with you. I don't like that date. I think when we kick that information out to parents, we're definitely going to have some. That already have vacation scheduled during that time and that. I know that that's going to happen, it's predictable and it's. I know that that's going to happen. It's predictable and it's disappointing.
And so I guess if there's nothing we can do this year with the eighth grade, if there's, if there's another way that we could make up something, because I, I will tell you, I agree a hundred percent that that overnight stay for an eighth grader, it's almost like they'd come back a different person. And I don't know if I like they, they came back a different person, but there was a growing moment. There was a, a, a level of independence and a social change that I saw when, when my three kids went through that. And they literally, I feel like they came back a different person. They were out of town without their parents, with their peers overnight in a hotel. There was a lot to be said for that experience itself. And so I'm just thinking, moving forward in the future, whether it's, you know, this next this spring or next year, whenever it is, if the DC trip can't happen and, and that overnighter can't happen, that we maybe consider that the Columbus trip or whatever it is in Ohio or wherever we go, that, that seventh or eighth grade has that opportunity, has that experience. And I know I'm, I'm not criticizing that it couldn't be done now. Um, I can understand those challenges because our workforce is slim, slim everywhere. But um, just, just something to throw out there. I mean, that, that piece is critical, I think, for kids.
Yeah, I mean, I think about it and like, I, I, sorry, I keep referencing you, Jesse. I, I think about it all the time that um, these eighth graders, their last pre-COVID year was, was fifth grade. They're the only students in my middle school that have had a pre-COVID year. And our seventh graders, who will be eighth graders next year, if we don't move heaven and earth to ensure they have some of those experiences, then their entire middle school experience will have been defined by COVID restrictions. And we are in that, it's, it's just not going to be acceptable. Um, so we're going to have to really, we're going to have to really work that, you know, and, and it's, it matters and it matters, it matters a lot. So.
Be creative.
Yeah, I mean, and so getting back to, you know, the overnight that, you know, was brought up. Is that out of question, is it out of the realm of possibility right now to, to adjust that? I know the dates are slim pickings, but uh, thirteenth and fourteenth or something, you know, just a, I mean, they're everything on there looks great. I mean, it looks like a lot of fun, which is a lot to cram into one day as it is. But it still looks like there's a tremendous amount of fun that these kids would have. But that overnight experience, I know we keep harping on that every, you know, because it is such an important moment. I mean, stuff that we still talk about, you know, today in our forties and our, our our trip to camp and stuff like that to our overnight DC and the Ohio tour. Is staying overnight in Columbus completely out of the question? Is that something that possibly could still be worked into for these students?
I don't think you're going to have the support of your, um, your, your school chaperones who chaperon those events. I just don't, I don't think it, that's going to be there. Um, I don't, and even if that was there. Um, we, I looked at that maybe like the beginning of January and there, there weren't a lot of multiple nights of the, for, of overnight availability for the tour companies either. Um, so those are the two barriers that, that you're going to run into.
What would it take chaperone wise? I mean, I mean, I mean, different chaperones than the ones listed, the parent chaperones. I mean, what would it take to try and give these kids some experience that's going to be positive coming out of middle school to end their eighth grade year? You know, it's something to that extent is what I'm saying. I mean, do the parents who were fingerprinted and all IDed up to volunteer? I mean, just to give these kids an opportunity? Or are there other teachers that would be willing to, to stay overnight? I mean, it, I mean, it's, it's one night. You know, and I don't think it's asking a lot, in my opinion, just to give these kids something that they can remember, hopefully for the rest of their life that's not COVID-related.
Well, I think it's definitely our opinion that, you know, that uh, you know, fourteen hours away from school on tour buses in Columbus is not a memorable event. Um, you know, I, I'm not of the belief that students need to stay overnight in a hotel to have a memorable event. Um, but if you, if you want to go down that, that road, you know, would they, and that's essentially what, what it would take, you know, that there would need to be some authorization for you know, the eighth grade trip to be you know, parent chaperoned or voluntarily chaperoned, and then there'd be, need to be some contact with the tour company to see if there were you know, if there were accommodations available with tour availability and then you know, some uh, communication with, you know, Columbus area hotels and then a, a new fee would need to be determined and deposit dates and those sorts of things. So as we stand right now, there is a hundred and fifty dollars sitting in approximately sixty students' accounts. Um, uh, as a deposit for the DC trip. Um, so the recommendation, if you see on the memo in front of you, is that that hundred and fifty dollars be turned into a uh, essentially an eighth grade field trip fee with no additional funds. Um, and that hundred and fifty dollars would cover the cost of the Columbus day trip. Um, the Guardians Terrace Club event. Um, and then, you know, part of, a small part of the um, a small part of the uh, the spring carnival. Um, the majority of that money being for the tour company itself. The tour coach buses are um, incredibly expensive, but as the students and the advisors would tell you, it's a big part of the experience is the tour, the tour coach bus itself is a big part of the trip. Um, so there would be no extra fund. So, you know, you have to determine a cost and uh, talk to parents about additional funds. So I was relieved that we weren't going to be asking parents for more money at this point. You know, for an event that's in the near future. Um, but that's, I guess, kind of what you would be looking at.
What if, what if we got off the idea of going to Columbus and did it in Cleveland? Um, with, with the potential of Rockwell Hall of Fame, Guardians game, which gives another month of planning, we, we pushed it back in the mag and it wouldn't interfere with timing of uh, Good Friday. Um, you have Rockwell Hall of Fame, you have Guardians game, you have uh, Aquarium.
Trolley Tours.
And, and the Cleveland Museum of Art.
Yep.
And you could do, you could use school busing potentially and potentially work between hotels. If we couldn't get them all in one hotel, we would at least have some flexibility with hotels relatively close to each other. Um, sorry, it would make ma- make for a lot of planning, but if we got off the, if we got off the idea of going to Columbus and keeping it local, I think it provides some more flexibility. Plus, would probably give us more flexibility with chaperones being local.
Uh, yeah, when, you know, I, I myself am not the, like, tour, there's uh, names, tour, tour guide, tour, tour assistant, tour guide that's uh, stipend for the, you know, for the eighth grade trip, that's Mr. Nemeczek. Um, when we kind of uh, made some end road determinations at the end of December, that the, the trip was probably not going to happen, based on the information we were getting. I provided Mr. Nemeczek with a series of ideas um, that I thought would, would be beneficial, um, that would be the good ideas for the students. Um, a Cleveland, an overnight in Cleveland being one of them, that was probably um, one of the top ideas I thought, I thought could work. You know, it gives you the availability of parents coming and picking up students, you know, in, in the event of, you know, some unforeseen, you know, COVID-related issue, which is what bars up the buses, you know, from a long-distance DC trip. You know, how do you respond to a student who wakes up in a hotel room and is sick, you know? All those kinds of questions, you know, if you have parents that are within close distance, you kind of, kind of negates that. Um, you know, making a trip out to DC is significantly more difficult than making a trip to Cleveland. So that was I, kind of on my docket of um, just ideas that I'd suggested, but ultimately um, you know, that's a, was a conversation between, you know, Mr. Nemeczek and Mr. Nize. But those are certainly options that, that we can explore. Try and piece things together um, as rapidly as possible. Um, time is definitely of the essence. Um, because I know families are kind of chomping at the bit, you know, for some.
Right. Me and Columbus stayed on. So let's say Columbus stayed on and then say that Guardians game. What's the potential, in your opinion, because you've done a lot of this work in research? You know, an overnight, Columbia, you know, Guardians game, and then you've got the next day, Brock Hall, something, whatever. Um, something like that. Would that be, I mean, keep coming, keeping Columbus the way it is, but then just adding an overnight to Cleveland sometime when the weather's warmer and like in May, you know, with this baseball game? Is that a possibility?
Keeping, keeping Columbus as a day trip and turning the Indians game into, into an overnight?
Yeah.
I mean, anything's possible under the sun, you know, it's just a matter of exploring, you know, cost and availability and yeah, you know, and again, your, your chaperone issue is a, is a big. Um, your chaperone issue is a, is an issue, but certainly.
A good time too.
Good times.
I think I, I think I put the good. I think I put the good times three on my, on my list of, you know, recommendations.
And take a look.
It'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good luck. Think of the playhouse, see a play.
They do a really nice behind-the-scenes tour. I'm sure, whatever, I, I appreciate all the effort to try to do what you can to give that something, because I know there's roadblocks everywhere.
Absolutely.
Not fun trying to accomplish. And it's not in our control that the kids don't get to do this stuff. If we had our way, they would have gone to DC. They would have gone to sixth grade camp, but unfortunately it's out of our control.
Yeah, you run into all sorts of really interesting roadblocks along the way. I mean, I had hotels, a lot of hotels flat out telling me no. You know, both, you know, both locally and, you know, I called Columbus area hotels. Um, I don't think I called any Cleveland area ones, but I called Columbus area hotels and um, in DC ones, and, and they were uninterested in large groups, um, specifically large groups of um, students. So it, you know, you run into roadblocks everywhere because they don't have cleaning crews, you know, so it's, there's all sorts of complications. But I can certainly explore that in the morning.
Like I said, Columbus, I mean, the itinerary looks great. I mean, I'd love the Ohio State Stadium tour myself. That'd be fantastic, you know, but I mean, it, I mean, I'm looking at Magic Mountain online. It, it looks really cool. I think everyone would have a blast on, on a Columbus trip. Plus, of course, the kids are away from their parents, which they love even more. So, um, you know, I think that's great. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm.
Welcome.
You playing with me?
Yeah.
My fault, Mr. Chisholm.
He put you on the spot. All right, are we um, set to move on to the next item?
Yes.
And last, final item on our uh, work session is the, just the COVID contact tracing investigation update, which there was no DH update that came out this week, so we just wanted to update the community, um, that.
Yeah, I, you know, thankfully, you know, the ODH has, has created some recommendations that offer us some relief and the necessity to contact trace and um, and uh, you know, notifications. Uh, Dr. Muncheski, you have anything? I mean, we're going to follow and uh.
Yeah, no, um, talk to school nurse and actually this goes into place on February, the last portion of this goes into place this week, um, we're set to go. Um, we'll discontinue that even Russian contact tracing case unless there's a spike that we know is kids from particular set and offering in and then we would certainly contact face at that point, but no, that was quite a burden.
Are the parents still to report it though?
Yes, and I, I'm glad you said that, please. Uh, that is critical for us to be able to, to spread in the classroom. So all positive cases reported to one of the two.
And I think, Mr. Kowal, you know, you, you give it to Lee Kind of John, but there's once a week.
Every day.
Yeah.
And then will our dashboard be updated weekly and?
That's still updated weekly.
And then the daily notifications.
If you were in a classroom, someone that's still there.
No, I mean, like the ones that are, that people, we use this in the email out for every case, and now we do it to for close contacts and now, but we post it on the website every day.
Posted on the website.
So will we continue to post it on the website every day for anyone who wants? Okay.
I just thought that would be important since it's something different from what we've been doing. So we'll require to do less.
That does not change this at all, though, if someone does have.
But we don't have to contact trace, so that's the difference.
Okay.
So.
This is just about.
Yeah.
Are we spending additional funds to contact trace? No, it's more of an additional burden on our administrators. I'm just looking to help you out. The check's in the mail from Lee Kind going out there to charge five thousand dollars for our contact tracing work.
Feel free to address us to.
Basically, when you boil the gun to the arrows.
Feel free to address us to Green Reaper. Some great programs for kids and a lot of us do, it's just.
Yep, we do. All right.
It's just like, get the bill after a nice meal. I mean, it's hard.
I have to be the big spender. Imagine that.
The, the standing items, and this isn't really our um, committee reports at this time, because those we're doing at the general, we're at our general meeting, right?
Yep.
Everybody's understanding, okay. Um, so our standing items are just these five. Does anybody have anything on any of those five items?
Yes.
Go ahead, Andy.
Uh, board governance.
Board governance.
Um, I would propose that we start using Microsoft OneDrive to share the week, the, the weekly board updates and the attachments. So we, you can essentially just drop Word files and anything that's attached into a shared folder and I will work with somebody to set that up. That's what I use with all my clients.
So.
Yeah, you know, and then show us how to use it. Yes, it's, it's really, um, but, but it's a centralized place where we could drop everything. It's like Dropbox. But it's a Microsoft product. You can link it to email, just send on an email. The, the, the updates out there, we could go back historically and look at things. We could have a folder for each week. Drop all the attachments in. You don't have to attach everything to a Word document. It's driving.
Every time this conversation comes up, I'm, I'm reminded how obsolete my technology degree from the nineties is.
So do I have to download another app and sign another account?
And it's free.
So, and instead of even better, so instead of going back and looking at each update, are we getting an email on a Friday to look at past updates, because I save all those, then this would all be in one place?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and you could open it with web browsers or you can download an app, but you always look in one folder and you see updates.
So it would just be dated?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, that would be. You know, that just drop them in?
Yep.
I like that, yes.
Save on email.
Okay, awesome.
And so you don't send a link to the email or you just send, hey, the updates in there?
Yeah, you, you could do that, or you can have a little, a little app that watches it and you're notified when something's new. So we'll figure out. That'd be another, because then you don't have to, yeah, and it's just in there, yes. And it's, 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 since they're our confidential item, it's secure.
It's secure.
Yes.
Nice.
Okay.
I like that.
Well, there's no board update this week, so.
You got a week.
Oh, really? It's only a couple of days away. Isn't it Wednesday already?
Yeah.
Um.
Tuesday, sorry.
I'm just glad I made it out of January.
Oh, this is good. Um, all right, is it, we're good? I'd like to do that. I'd like that idea. So you'll work with Gina on getting that cut up.
No, do we need the executive session or not?
We do not need to go to executive session. Um, we had it on here as a placeholder. We thought we did, but we don't. So, um, we need a motion.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Foley.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Leidig?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Truster?
Yes.
Eight forty-three.
Would it matter if I?